...by Brett Holmes from Calder Baptist Church. Please silence your cell phones and pastors, you'll come forward. Everyone, after a pastor gives the prayer, please remain standing for the Pledge of Allegiance to our nation's flag. Thank you.
Gracious God, we are thankful for this day and thankful for the people in this room who have been called together to do the work of the city and its people. Lord, you once told your people to seek the welfare of the city in which they lived, and Lord, that is what this gathering is to do. So help us, oh Lord, in all that we do to seek this city's welfare, to seek the help, the wealth, and the flourishing of its people, that we may become a place of safety and love for all. We especially lift up those in Colorado Springs right now, oh Lord, as they seek to rebuild their own city and community. Help us, oh Lord, to respond in ways that make this place safe and secure for all. Bless these people and the work that they do, as it is good and important, and help us to know that you are with us in all that we do. It's in your name we pray, Christ Jesus, hear our prayer. Amen.
Amen. Please join us in the pledge to our nation's flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you Pastor Holmes, and happy Thanksgiving to you. May I have the roll call, please?
Mayor Mutan.
Present.
Mayor Pro Tim Durio.
Here.
Councilmember Getz.
Present.
Councilmember Turner.
Here.
Councilmember Felschau.
Present.
Councilmember Samuel, absent, and Councilmember Neal.
Present.
Thank you.
Thank you. There are no presentations or proclamations or recognitions on today, but at the end of the close of the Beaumont City Council meeting, we will hold an executive session to consider matters related to, to deliberate of the purchase, exchange, lease, or value of real property in accordance with section 551 dot 072 of the Government Code to wit Riverfront Project. We will also consider matters related to contemplate or pending litigation in accordance with section 551 dot 071 of the Government Code, Caleb Fenter versus Beaumont, City of Beaumont, Chris Espoon, cause number B dash 210244. Thank you. At this time, if you haven't already done so, please fill out the green slip to the back of the room, hand it to the clerk to the front of the room, if you would like to speak on consent agendas, item one through four. When she call your name, please come to the podium. The green light will come on at the beginning of your three minutes, and it will end when the red light come on. Thank you.
I'm sorry, I'm waiting, there's someone filling out a green slip.
And also, would you please silence your cell phones, as I forgot to silence mine
We have none, Mayor. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. At this time, I will call for a motion for the consent agenda.
Move to approve.
Second.
Is there any discussion? All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, the motion carries. Mr. City Manager, may I have the reading of item number one, please?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Council considered ordinance authorizing the issuance of City of Beaumont, Texas Waterworks and Sewer System Revenue Bonds, Series 2023, and authorizing the mayor or city manager and chief financial officer to approve the amounts, interest rates, prices, and terms thereof for both series and to execute all documents related to the selling of bonds. This is basically a follow-up to the work session from the budget process. It's the issuance of $25 million for water and wastewater infrastructure projects that are currently under construction and design. And basically, we have Todd here to answer any questions about this item, but it's funded through the Water Utilities Fund, and staff recommends approval of the ordinance.
Thank you, Mr. City Manager. You've heard the reading of item number one. Is there any discussion?
Motion.
I'm sorry, may I have a motion, please?
Motion to approve the ordinance.
May I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, the motion carries. Mr. City Manager, may I have the reading of item number two, please?
Yes, Mayor. Council consider resolution approving an amendment to chapter 22 of the Code of Ordinance, Article 22 dot 03, Industrial Waste Standards. This is an ordinance that provides the legal authority for the city to execute its industrial pretreatment program. This identifies the parameters of pollutants that are allowed into the waste system. What you have in exhibit that identifies those limits of the TLLBs, and we have Mike Harris and his staff here to answer any questions in regard to those limits, and staff recommends approval.
Thank you. You've heard the reading of item number two. May I have a motion, please?
Move to approve.
Second.
I have a motion and a second on the floor. Is there any discussion? All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, the motion carries. May I have the reading of item number three, please, Mr. City Manager?
Yes. Council consider a resolution approving the purchase of a new long throw sound system for the Julie Rogers Theater. The Rogers Theater is in need of a new sound system. Current one is outdated and has a lot of operative issues. We went off RFPs, we got one back on that RFP, and that quoted in your packet. This will be funded through the Capital Reserve Fund. This item did come over above estimate, so the remainder will be, will come from fund balance, and staff has recommended approval of the resolution.
Thank you. You've heard the reading of item number three. May I have a motion, please?
Move to approve.
I have a motion and a second on the floor. Is there any discussion? Mayor Pro Tim Durio.
Two questions. One, what exactly do you mean when they say a long throw sound system?
Thank you. Our events director, Emily Wheeler, is coming forward. Thank you.
That's just a fancy way of saying a sound system that can fill the room, so it'll, it's the appropriate size for this, the space that we have.
Okay. And what, can you explain, one of y'all, the, this point system that they use to approve, to come to this number, or to approve this?
Yeah, I didn't know, I wasn't sure who was on the committee. But basically, on these type of deals, we try to do best value for the city. Obviously, price is going to be the most critical price point of the evaluation, so that's awarded 40 points, and then the people on the committee, they, you know, they have estimates of what they thought it was going to cost, so they basically graded on these, on these four criteria, which is the price, the warranty, and the life expectancy, the prior experience with the vendor, and the timeframe for installation. And it's, like I said, it's just a process we use to try to get the best value for the city. Usually, this comes into play when we have more than one vendor that's replying, but obviously, there was only one choice in this instance, so that's how it was graded.
All right. Thanks, God.
Councilmember Getz and Councilmember Turner.
Hi, Emily. I attended the Godfather screening last Friday. It was great to see the 50th anniversary being marked with the showing of that movie in the Jefferson Theater. What can we expect the sound to be like? How will it be different than what we currently have with our sound system?
So, the, this is for the Julie Rogers Theater and the current...
Oh, I'm sorry. I'm so sorry.
No, that's okay. But I will speak to it. So, the current system in the Julie Rogers Theater is 25 years old. Most of the parts are obsolete. The ones that are working can't really be repaired at this point. So, what this does is, it, you know, it sets us where we need to be, number one. Number two, it eliminates our clients having to rent a lot of outside sound to bring in to make their events work.
Okay, thanks. The sound system sounded great at the Jefferson, I'll tell you that.
Thank you. Councilmember Turner.
Just a comment, you know, a lot of investors come in and do shows. I just want to let you know, Emily, I appreciate it, because you actually cut some costs off the investors, and I think our community truly appreciates these shows, so I think this will be enhancement to the City of Beaumont. So, I just want to let you know, I appreciate you and good job.
Thank you.
And additional rentals, too.
Yeah, exactly.
Thank you, Emily.
Thank you.
Any other discussion? All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, the motion carries. May I have the reading of item number four, please?
Thank you, Mayor. Council consider a resolution approving the purchase of security cameras for four city park, community center parking lots from Infinity Connections, Inc. of Beaumont, Texas. You know, in the past, we've had some significant criminal activity in some parks and areas. We had gotten feedback from council members about their concern about this activity, and there was a recommendation that we consider parks for, I mean, cameras for parks, I'm sorry. And in regards to that, I appointed a committee of staff members to evaluate and look at some sites and what we needed to do, and they came back with these recommendations for, for the different parks here as a part of that program. So, staff recommends that security cameras be installed in the following locations, Ellis Key Park, Central Park Imagination Station, John Paul Davis Center, and Rogers Park. And this will be funded through the Capital Reserve Fund, and staff recommends approval of the resolution.
Thank you. Before a call for the vote, it has been a lot of activities in several parks, and hopefully we can expand the cameras to some other parks in the near future. All in favor?
Motion.
I'm sorry, may I have the motion, please? I'm ready to move forward.
Move to approve the resolution.
Second.
Thank you. Is there any discussion, please? Councilmember Getz, and then Mayor Pro Tim Durio.
I just want to commend our city manager for listening and putting together a committee to research the various parks that had a need for this. It's something that I believe will absolutely help deter crime, number one, but will help the police solve any crimes that do happen to be committed, and we've seen the success of these cameras at the hike and bike trails, and I think it'll also show to be successful at the parks. Thank you.
Thank you. Mayor Pro Tim.
Are there any other parks that currently have cameras, or are these the first?
The only other parks are Klein Park and then the hike and bike trails.
Okay. Thank you, Bart.
Councilmember Neal?
I'm here.
Oh, you were just looking at me. Okay. All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, the motion carries. That concludes our agenda for today, and at this time, it's public comment. If you haven't already done so, please fill out the green slip.
Mayor, we have two work sessions on the agenda.
I'm sorry.
I haven't read it. You're talking about making...
I am so sorry.
Thanksgiving.
I'm, I'm not in my regular, I'm not in my regular binder today, so I had to redo my binder. We do have a work session to review the requirements for speakers and others in the meeting of Beaumont City Council, and Mr. City Manager, if you'll go ahead and lead us into that work session.
Okay, I think I will yield to our learned city attorney, Shereen.
Thank you.
Thank you. It was requested by Councilman Getz and seconded by Councilman Neal that we review the speaker and decorum rules for council. The presentation focuses mostly on those rules as it relates to city council meetings, but I will tell you that a lot of the cities that we looked at actually have a uniform code throughout their, their system for all public meetings in attendance. Next slide. So, our current practice is, we, obviously, we limit the speaking to three minutes. One of our rules is that we can extend it at the mayor's judgment, and that we only allow one speaker at the podium unless a translator is needed. That's really not an enforceable policy, because we allow co-presenting, and sometimes more than one person at the podium. Speakers must refer to council members and city employees and departments by title. Individuals or businesses cannot be referred to by name when speaking. Speakers cannot advocate or oppose political candidates or at the podium, and that's usually enforced by not allowing campaign shirts or campaign attire, buttons, and et cetera. No person of council should disrupt or interfere with the meeting, and those who fail to comply with the rules we warn once and continue violations will result in expulsion from chambers and a 90-day loss of speaking privileges. And council cannot respond to speakers on unposted matters except for providing specific factual information or explanations or policy. And council members may not discuss public comments beyond proposing matter to be placed on a future agenda. And this information was taken from our updated decorum rules that a council adopted in December of 2019. I would point out that those rules are not really posted anywhere online, and so that might, is a change that we're also proposing to happen. Next slide. When we looked at proposing some changes to our policies and speaker requirements, we looked at some surrounding cities, as well as the larger cities, to kind of see where we stood and measured up to them. Next slide. The City of Waco is probably our, one of the closer comparisons, but they allow for or require registration 15 minutes up to the meeting, up until the first speaker begins to speak. If an item is pulled from the agenda or table, that individual loses their privilege to speak on that item. At the top of the slide, you can see their order in which they allow to speak, so it's the reading of the caption, and they actually open it up for public comment, so it's not necessarily done prior to the meeting, but they allow speaking on the item as it's being addressed. There's a, speakers are limited to one presentation regardless if they want to speak on one item or several. When speaking for a group, they extend the time from, timeframe to 10 minutes, and the providing officer may restrict time if there is going to be multiple people speaking on the item, just to control the length of the meeting. Next slide. The City of Port Arthur, right up the road, they actually have a similar speaker requirement, where they require you to register for the meeting at 5:00 PM on that Thursday prior. Again, this allows for management of the meeting. They, they offer online registration and in-person registration for individuals. They have five minutes to address council, and they can extend it up to 20 minutes for a group presentation. In the evenings, they have regular evening meetings. They limit their public speaking to five addresses, and it's basically first come, first served, and any individual who isn't allowed to speak at that evening meeting, they're rolled over to the next meeting. They have the option to roll over to the next evening meeting or the next meeting on the, just the next public meeting. So, if they want to speak specifically at the evening based on their schedule, they can just say, "I'll speak at the next evening meeting," or they can speak at the next available council meeting. They also have rules, next slide, for postponing and removing items that's included in their charter, so they specifically outline the process for removal of an item. It's outlined in their charter. That's one item that we don't, and our current rules have, is how to remove an item for agendas that's not listed in any of our rules of decorum. Next slide. And they also have a procedure outlined in their city charter for holding an item, and that be the same as in Roberts' Rules of Tabling and Order. And it's specifically outlined in their charter. That's also not a thing that the council has adopted. I just want to point out our current rules for, our procedures for council only addresses making and amending a motion. Next slide. Lastly, Wichita Falls. Again, they're another city that's comparable in size to the city. They require a registration prior to, they limit public addresses to five minutes and a cumulative to 30 minutes, a limit. They restrict each, have a strict one-minute extension for addresses, so if they're going to allow time to be extended, it's only extended for one minute, for a total of four, four minutes total. Next slide. They have adopted their own preliminary procedures, and they're called to order, but they have a specific way. They do public hearings on the other side of the screen, and it's very limited. Obviously, they allow question and answer period by the, by the council, then they open up the floor for any additional speakers, and then it's closed and deliberated. The city, our particular council doesn't have a formal procedure for public hearings. Next slide. The City of Houston, that's our full version, but the breakout for them as well is that they do have a pre-registration. They do not allow bags or containers in their hands while they're at the podium while they're speaking, so there's no presentation in that form, and they also are prohibited from many outbursts, or anyone speaking from the audience is automatically removed from council chambers. The City of Dallas, again, another city that requires pre-registration. Obviously, there's a theme here. We are the only city that does not require pre-registration at our meetings. They, speakers must address the presiding officer only, which means they cannot talk to city staff or any of the other council members. They can only talk to presiding officer, which in this case would be the mayor, so they would have to limit their address directly to the mayor's. They also have a prohibition from anyone who violates the rules to a 30-day speaking requirement, so the first five registers are permitted to speak during the beginning of the period. They would have a pretty, pretty limited window for that. They can speak on multiple items, will only get to speak on one period. Handouts are permitted, but they have to be turned in prior to speaking. That, again, presents some from wasting their time, so that information is turned into the clerk prior to them speaking. Next slide. The City of Fort Worth, they get six minutes to speak instead of three. That's probably the, a big jump. They have the longest speaking period for an individual speaker. A person or member of a group cannot be allowed to speak separately at the same address meeting, so what that means if there's several people are going to speak, and they're speaking on a group, that person can't speak multiple times because they're connected to a group. Their public comments are limited to the subject they're speaking about when they identify for registering, so they can't just speak about anything. They specifically have to identify what they're going to be addressing council on. So, just pass that up for you, please. We are proposing some new changes to our current policy, and we relax that those, that those items be maintained and reviewed regularly, but also published on the city's website, both the rules of decorum and the speaker requirements. We're going to ask council to adopt some form of Roberts' Rules of Order, or commit to a version of their own that allows for tabling, removing an item, holding over, or holding over an item, as well as referring an item to, to the manager for committee or for review. And then also, consider adopting a uniform speaking policy for all, for all the meetings. One of the big ones would be the online registration. That's the biggest change. We'll require online registration. In the past, we've had individuals who've not completed the green card, green card in time or completely, and that doesn't allow for accurate recording of minutes online. You can require that those fields be, be mandatory. If you notice in section one, one of the biggest things that is, requires them to be registered at a 3:00 PM deadline, that Monday prior to the meeting. And obviously, that would change based on if we did this for a uniform across the board, that would change to 3:00 PM the day before the meeting, but this was generated specifically for a city council. Visual aids and handouts are to be required to be submitted at the time of the meeting. We were required that speakers adhere to any speaker decorum rules that are adopted by council, essentially no profanity, no disruption, so on and so forth. And then section four has a removal policy that would allow for the presiding officer to remove any individual who was disruptive or violated the speaker policies that obstructed the view of any citizen viewing in the audience, and then it would have a 30-day suspension from attending public meetings. The other, and I think the current one is 90. I thought 30 days was more lax, so we went with that, because that seemed to be the standard across some of the comparable cities. And the next big change would be that the individuals, sorry, that if they were removed and they were registered to speak, that they would not be allowed to come back to speak, that that removal would be, would forfeit their right to speak, and if they were the registered person who is speaking on behalf of the group, then the entire group would be forfeited their chance to speak. And so, those are the big major changes. Those are consistent with some of the things that are happening in other cities. I think it would allow for more effective and orderly meeting.
Thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
At this time, I'm going to go ahead and call for Councilmember Turner.
My, my concern is this pre-registration. Me personally, I'm a fan of giving people the opportunity to express and voice their opinions, and with the pre-registration, I think we can limit it. Citizens, my, my, my follow-up question is, is pre-registration also included in public comments, or is this just consent agenda items, or is this items that may be on the topic for discussion?
So, as always, the proposal, is this a proposal, but the proposal was that it would be for any person wishing to speak at the meeting. The City of Waco does theirs 15 minutes prior to the meeting, so they do allow for online as well as in-person registration up to 15 minutes prior to the start of the meeting. That's an option as well. The idea was to, if, if you wanted to allow for, for if it's a more controversial item and you say, "You know what? This is a big, important item, we're going to extend the speaking time on this item because we see a lot of people want to speak, or we're going to limit the amount of time, so we're only going to allow so many people." You have the right to do that if you know in advance how many individuals are wishing to speak, and I think that it's only fair that the clerk would have at least a day to kind of gather that. But again, these, the proposal was based on what the, what the average or comparable was amongst other cities, but like I said, the City of Waco is one of the cities that does allow for registration up until the start of the meeting.
Yes, I totally understand. I just, that's just my personal opinion. Like, I want to allow people the opportunity to speak on whatever particular topic they may want to. You know, sometimes people may not want to speak to after they hear it's discussed, and they come mentioning it in public comments, so that's just, just my suggestion, that's all.
So, one of the things to say about that is that a lot of the cities who allow for pre-registration, again, they allow for individuals, if they want to register speaking, they know that that's an item that they want to speak on, they don't restrict them to speaking before the item is discussed. So, if you go back, one of the individuals, they allow for speaking, Waco's one of the cities, they allow for speaking as the item is being addressed. So, whereas the city allow, we currently allow for speaking before an item, before the start of the approval of the agenda, they allow for the speaking on the item as it's called. So, after the caption is read and the report or information is given, they open it up for public comment, so those individuals have a chance to have heard you speak about it, they then get to talk about it, and then the mayor closes the public hearing and the public comment portion, and then it's an action item to be addressed. So, that's, that's it.
Well, I, I, I have to agree with Councilmember Turner. If someone decides, you know, the morning of or late, that they're going to come to council meeting, and they haven't pre-registered or not aware, I just want to make it available to the citizens that they can come and address us at any point in time like they do now.
We can change it. Like, if this, if it's the council's majority to have it registration up until, we can, I mean, again, it was proposed...
I don't want registration at all. I, I mean, I believe what we have...
Well, we have a registration process now, and it's to fill out the green card. People can't just speak, they have to fill out the green card, so the registration process is already in play.
But not online registration.
No, it's not, it's not, we're not currently online. You have to be at the meeting, you have to come in and fill out the green card.
Right. And the green, I mean, the green card process has been working. I just don't see the problem with the green, with the green card, especially if you come up to the meeting and may not have even planned to attend meeting, but for whatever reason, you could come up, fill out the green card, and, and speak on whatever issue. Thank you. Councilmember Getz, and then Councilmember Samuel, and then Councilmember Felschau.
So, first of all, thank you for doing the research to look and see what other cities are doing, but I kind of do agree with both the mayor and Councilmember Turner that we seem to be working pretty well with what we have, and I, for one, would like to give citizens the opportunity, continue to give them the opportunity to sign up the day of. However, you know, what our school district does is they want you to sign up in advance, and if you sign up 24 hours in advance, you're given two and a half minutes to speak, and if you sign up at the meeting, or I believe it's at the meeting, you're given 90 seconds. So, maybe in an attempt to be, I understand what you're trying to do, you're trying to, on controversial topics, get an idea of how many speakers might be... You're trying to, on controversial topics, get an idea of how many speakers might be signed up to speak. Maybe one thing we can do is to encourage people to sign up to speak, give them three minutes if they sp- sign up by a certain time. And then if they come here and the spirit moves them, uh, give them a little less time, uh, because they didn't do the, the three minutes. But I do feel it's important to, um, give our ca- our citizens the opportunity to address council. And, uh, I like the opportunity to sign up at council meetings. But maybe they shouldn't get to speak for quite as long as people that take the time to register in advance. Just my thoughts.
Council member Samuel.
Yes, thank you, mayor. I, uh, we've, this is operated fine, uh, for the most part. However, I believe in being consistent. Uh, if we give a person opportunity to speak, uh, there are times that people go over. Uh, I think we have an opportunity to address that with a change. And that could be if there's someone that pre-registers before the council day, they can have addition, more time than coming to the podium to speak. Because most of the time, when it's gotten close to the time, most of the time it's the person that has a pre-prepared message to pass. So we can give someone that comes up that has get, given notice by registration the day before, but we don't have to require that. If you come to the council meeting and you wanna speak, you can speak as they've done, uh, thus far. So I, I, uh, I don't think we've had very much problems. The only thing I, I think we should be consistent. If we give one person three minutes, uh, then we should let that be known unless they've given pre-notice and they've registered to come in.
Well, can I respond, can I respond to, and, and you're exactly right. But, um, as chair over this body, whenever someone has gone over three minutes, it's, it's been pretty much controlled. I mean, if you're in the, if you're in the middle of your sentence, I've allowed people at the podium to complete, uh, what they're saying. And rarely does someone really go over to the point where I have to just say, okay, you've gone above and beyond. And, and that's rare.
And, uh, my argument was not addressing something that has happened. Uh, it is rare. So that's why I say it's not something that is burning to be changed because it's worked thus far.
Council member Felshaw.
Thank you, mayor. So right, you may not be able to answer this question, but in your study and research, did you pick up a sense of why the cities that have chosen to require pre-registration? Is there a purpose and what is it they're trying to eliminate?
So, again, most of my, most of my friends are city attorneys in these cities. So we actually did talk about it. For the most part, a lot of the pre-registration was just to control, um, the length of the many, meetings, especially in the larger cities where they, uh, have larger or lengthier agendas. It was to really give a sense of, uh, how, how to manage certain reports or just how to, um, control the, the agenda so that the meeting wouldn't be extremely long. We're talking about cities like, you know, Dallas and Houston that can go into, you know, one A M. meetings, uh, meeting times. And a lot of city council members, uh, cities do meet in the evening. So just to control the flow of the meeting. But, um, the other part was to, uh, also, um, the speak, the, the cities that require, uh, like the no bags and stuff like that, uh, and just to identify individuals, uh, who are speaking was to make sure that the meeting flowed, uh, timely. So where they weren't waiting or lagging for individual speak. They would request that people were gonna speak on the item, go ahead and get to the podium and identify them in order, you know, to just kind of just have a more orderly meeting. So it wasn't necessarily to restrict, uh, people from speaking, but it was really just to maintain order in the flow of the meeting to restrict it from being too long, which really isn't a, a, a big issue here. Uh, in the city of Port Arthur, the pre-registration, um, again, was just for, to maintain a, an accurate record so that when they came to the podium for minute purposes, they already knew who was gonna speak, just to keep the meeting moving.
Okay, thank you. Uh, one, one more question. I'm sorry, mayor. Just, you know, typically at the end of the meeting during public comments, uh, the council, we understand we can't respond. We don't engage in that conversation. But we can, as a council, uh, give out factual information. If, if there's, if there's something is said that's incorrect, can we not give out factual information to correct that? And then who should be, do we typically look to the city manager to do that? Or again, there, there's been some, I, I've had some moments where I felt like citizens walked out of here and we should have responded to them with factual information.
So, again, that would, uh, be up to the presiding officer who will be directed to give, um, a response regarding factual information. Um, typically, if it's something just involving general governance of the city, the city manager will respond or direct a member of staff to respond as a point of order, just to make sure that the record is clear. If it's a legal issue, obviously, the city attorney will respond, um, to make sure that the record is clear. But, uh, most of the time in some of the other cities, it's only at the direction of the presiding officer that factual information is given in response to a public comment.
But we can do that. I know we have.
Yeah, so our rules allow for, um, any member of the dais or, um, to, uh, respond to a, a citizen on an unposted item to provide factual information.
And I know we haven't before, but it seems like the council members, we've always held back from engaging, uh, and, and looking to, you know, I, I guess I'm looking for to, what, what would be protocol.
So under our current rules of decorum, a council, council member or the mayor, any, any member of the dais can respond in, to a citizen uh, on an unposted item with factual information. But the common practice is that the presiding officer would direct a member of staff to respond. In other cities, but in, in our, in ours, since any member of the dais can do that. Any council member or city ca- city staff.
Thank you, mayor.
Mayor Protim and then council member Turner.
I just want to say I was satisfied with the way the system is now. But I did have a question. If we were to do pre-registration, online registration and things like that, that'd be something like if it's a big subject with, uh, Tina, is that something that y'all would handle? Would y'all have enough time to get all that list together about who gets to speak, how long and, and all that?
We should be able, excuse me, we should be able to if they.
More convenient for you than signing up at the meeting?
I mean, it would require going in and checking, you know, however we set it up, whether it's gonna be a inbox or whatever, it just will require monitoring it from, you know, from whatever time to the cutoff. As right now, we don't have to do that. But what if we miss one? Or, you know, something were to come through and we didn't get it because of whatever reason, it could be a technical glitch. I don't know. I mean, something like that could happen and someone did sign up and we did not receive that. So the process that we have now with the green slips, I think it works because we don't have to worry about what if the system went down, what if we missed one? And I'm not at all trying to say that we shouldn't. You know, if that's something that, of course, it would be at the will of council to try to do, you know, pre-registration. I'm not saying that we shouldn't do it, but we also should look at the pros and cons and what if something were to happen that we didn't receive a green slip, then what do we do if someone does show up and they wanna speak and they have done the pre-registration and we just, for some reason, didn't receive it? Or it could have been an oversight on the clerk's office. I mean, you know, there are merit of things that could go wrong. Yeah.
We, we are looking at new software to manage the agenda and it has meeting.
Does it?
Portions as well. We're about ninety-nine percent sure it would allow for pre-registration. As part of that, I could confirm that.
Okay.
We wouldn't have to make something up ad hoc.
Okay, good. I didn't know if that allowed for.
If we wanted to do that, I'm pretty, pretty certain we have a formalized process. And as long as you cut that registration period off soon enough before council, then there shouldn't be an issue with, with, you know, rendering that list for the clerk to go through during the meeting.
But also the registrant would also get a confirmation. So if there was a, if there was a glitch on our side, they would have a confirmation saying that, you know, I was registered. Yeah, so a lot of the cities that do offer pre-registration do operate on a software, um, agenda type system that allows for that. So it's kind of, I don't wanna say, there, there's a built-in fail-proof in terms of it's double checks and balances.
And as far as like when folks go over the limit, I think we do a pretty good job, uh, as telling, as far as telling. That's, I know one of the meetings that I ran, um, one of the speakers got up there and he was getting a little long-winded. I had to tell him a couple of times, but, you know, they, they're pretty good about stopping at the three minutes or, I don't know, three minutes and ten seconds, something like that. Pretty good at enforcing that.
Council member Turner, then council member Neil and council member Getz.
I do, I do like the fact that it has been instances where staff does respond with factual information. Uh, city attorney, I know you have done it several times because I think it's not informative when people come to the podium and they say things that are incorrect. And when it's recorded and documented, they leave and it's not corrected, it's under the assumption that, that, that may be the facts. So I do appreciate it when staff does do that. And when you say presiding officer, I rather be specific. When we say presiding officer, are we speaking in reference to the mayor?
So, yeah, so, and I, I, I said presiding officer because if we make this something that, uh, we attended planning commission yesterday, um, chairman Nizad is the presiding officer of that meeting. So it's whoever's the chairman. But in city council meeting, the chairman would either be the mayor or the mayor pro tem.
Okay.
And so we say presiding officer because it can change based on who's in that seat.
Okay, well, all I ask is for council, mayor, mayor pro tem, if it's something factual that, uh, staff, or some, a citizen comes up and says, can we po- please get staff to address it to make sure it's correct information, leaving out of here to reflect on the record? I think we've done it for the most part, but I just wanna make sure we don't miss it when people say, come up here and say things that are inaccurate.
Absolutely. Council member Neil.
Thank you, man. The only complaint that I've had or been told about is, you know, if it's not a posted item, the citizens have to wait until the very end of the meeting to talk about it. And maybe there's a better way for us to streamline that because you don't know if these meetings are gonna be thirty minutes or if they're gonna be four hours or five hours long. So sometimes the citizens that come up here to, to mention something to us, good or bad, don't get the opportunity to do it because they had to leave for scheduling reasons or, or whatever it may be. And so I don't know if there's a way to.
Yeah, so that, and I was gonna say, that's a, that's an agenda. Uh, I think there are some cities for that exact reason that do allow for public comment at the start of the meeting. And like I said, there are, are other cities that allow for, um, speaking, for the city of Waco, for example, that allow for speaking on the item as it becomes addressed. So they have an opportunity to tailor their comments to the comments that are being made or to the report that's being given, um, to allow for them to provide, I guess you wanna say, a more thoughtful or poignant, um, communication to council based on the information that they have at the time that the information is presented, as opposed to having to speak on just the item posted without any, um, background information. So, um, a lot of that, a lot of the, the information that relates to like the meeting stuff, it could probably be resolved with, um, a change of the meeting agenda.
Council member Getz.
Not to belabor this, but kind of in agreement with, uh, council member Samuel and with what I said earlier, I would favor that a, uh, person wishing to speak for three minutes, uh, at an open city council session must register twenty-four hours in advance. And that if a person wants to speak and it's less than twenty-four hours in advance, they can still register like we've always done, but they're, they can be given ninety seconds or two minutes, a little bit less time. Uh, trying to encourage people to register in advance, but not cutting off completely those that come here and decide that they wanna speak and just limiting their time a little bit.
I would just point out that, that, I'm taking notes. The, one thing that hasn't been addressed is like presentations, like currently council doesn't have like a, a, a presentation rule. We just, uh, or a policy for individuals who wanna do presentations to council other than the ones that are presented by staff. And I don't know if that's something you guys wanted to consider, um, as well. And then the other thing is, um, again, like our, our current rules are not really, it's, it's a, a modified version of Robert's rule, but it doesn't address the, the need to table or remove an item from the agenda. And so if you, if the direction was from staff to kind of, or for my office to go back and revamp that, then we can definitely, um, go back and look at those items and propose something for council to review.
I would just like to say, I, I could understand, um, the comparisons that are, that were used were Houston, which is, the population is two point three. Dallas, the population is one point two. And Fort Worth, the population is nine hundred and thirty-five thousand.
So we use the large and the small, just to give a, a big comparison. Large because obviously they have longer meetings and the need for, for stuff, it's more on the terms of, of to control the length of the meetings.
Right.
But we also use the smaller cities just to show that they were doing it just to have a more efficient and effective meeting. So the city of Waco, Port Arthur, which is a lot smaller than us, that, um, like less than a hundred thousand. But the city of Waco, which is closer to us than Wichita Falls, are both in the similar sized cities. And their need for that was to just control, uh, not necessarily to control the length of the meeting, but for efficiency. So we only included those larger, bigger cities, um, kind of along with councilman Felshaw we're seeing, to show the variance and how that, that can be used to both have a, control the length of the meeting, but also to have a more efficient meeting. So, um, we did wanna offer balance in that.
And I'm for efficiency, but our sole purpose here is to, um, make sure that our citizens are getting the information that they need and that they're able to come and communicate with us. So with that being said, um, I just think what we've done in the past has worked. I think we could enhance it by allowing someone that need to address us longer than three minutes would pre-register. So that way we would know that they're gonna be speaking longer. And that way it won't be any, you know, any interruptions from them when they come to the podium. Because they may have some, you know, an issue that, uh, they need to e- express to us that will take longer than three minutes. And that way we would know in advance.
So is there a, a time limit for, or a recommendation for a time limit for pre-registration? Would it be, because if the, if the current speakers are speaking, that register in person speak for three minutes, will we allow the pre-registered people to speak for?
Five? I would say five. I mean, because we don't want a whole lot of people to come up here and, and speak. I mean, you could have ten people come up here and speak six minutes and.
That's an hour.
That's, yeah, that's a whole hour.
Right, okay.
That's a whole hour, but I wanna address and make sure that we're addressing the, the citizens and they can be vocal and verbal to us. But another issue that, um, I think coming into, um, into the council chamber with posters and a- any type of gadgets, I mean, we don't know what they have. I mean, it could be a poster in front of you and if your hands are behind it, I mean, we can't see that.
So, um, especially in the larger cities, but also some cities, uh, Wichita Falls, they don't allow for posters unless it's directly related to the issue that they're speaking on. So if you have a poster or a vis- they call it a visual aid, any visual aid, it has to be directly related to the topic in which you're speaking on. So just a, um, a flat-out, you know, just a poster that just says, you know.
Yeah, because, I mean, we've had posters brought in here that's n- not even about.
Right.
City matters.
Yeah, so they, 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 um, they restrict it. And that, and I know that there was a conversation as it relates to free, free speech or, uh, First Amendment, but we are allowed to restrict it, um, based on that. So that's not a problem. But they restrict it, uh, limited only to, um, that item for which they're speaking on. And they require that any handouts or visual aids be pre-produced to the clerk so that that's pre-distributed to, uh, council at the dais at the time that they speak.
Can I, mayor, just ask, I'm sorry, can I ask one question for clarification? If we have, can we go back to the, if there's a work session or a public hearing? What did we say, excuse me, that we would do with speakers for public hearings or dilapidated structures? What would their, would they still need to pre-register as well?
So, uh, so that public hearing really referred to kind of like in other meetings, not necessarily in our, in our council meetings. But it would be the same process if, if someone was speaking, they wanted to speak on a dilapidated structure. If we did a pre-registration, they would pre-register. If not, if council was gonna keep it the same where they would just fill out the green card or if they were gonna do a dual system, then they would just fill out the, the system. But however, sometimes we have public hearings as it relates to appeals from other boards and commissions.
Right.
And so in that case, that individual wouldn't have to register to speak because he's on the agenda.
Right.
And so the only person who are per- And so the only person who, or persons who would be required to speak will be anybody in the audience who's not the applicant or not the person who's requesting action for the council. They would be required to register to speak on that item, but not the individual itself.
Thank you. Councilmember Gitts, mayor pro tem Durya, and then councilmember Felschall.
I would not be in favor of expanding the time to five minutes for people that pre-register. People that have a presentation that may take longer than three minutes often are allowed that because they have gotten with the mayor. And for instance, if it's, um, an economic opportunity such as we had with OCI, we would invite them to come up and give a presentation and it wouldn't be limited to three minutes. It would be limited, it, it wouldn't be limited except at your discretion. Uh, so I think, again, people that pre-register should be able to s- speak for three minutes and people that register the day of, uh, something, something less than three minutes. One of the things I did want to ask, uh, the city attorney is with regard to 2.3 on the recommendations. It says signs, placards, banners, or other visual displays that have the effect of communicating a viewpoint to council outside the time permitted to any speaker will not be allowed in council chambers. Would that be extended to t-shirts?
So some, um, some councils do have a dress code, um, for attending their meetings. It's to the point where they don't allow any, um, any derogatory profanity, um, almost similar to what would be, uh, required at a courthouse, so speak, no shorts, whatever. So they do restrict that. So if you wanted to do a, um, a dress and you could extend it to particular clothes, but this one was, um, actually came from a city who, um, they had a sign that, uh, was, um, essentially, uh, directing a very negative message, um, in regards to a previous council vote. And so they were, you know, they implemented that rule. So that, that's kind of where that one came from as, as it relates to a viewpoint for council. It has to be, you know, direct, only visible during their speech and it can't be held up the entire time. So in our rules, it can't restrict the view of another, um, individual attending the meeting.
Well, let's, you know, kind of be clear about some of the things that have led up to this. We've had some citizens, uh, of late that have come in with derogatory messages on their t-shirts, uh, for things completely outside of our purview, uh, talking about officers and county government, uh, or talking about private employers. Um, I, I'm cognizant, of course, of the first amendment and what needs to be able to be allowed under the first amendment. At the same time, when speakers come up and they take council time to talk about something that is completely unrelated to any city council business or any action that we could take, how, how do you balance that with the first amendment?
So when we create a public comment section, what we're doing is creating a public forum. And so it kind of boils down to, um, when you create a public forum, you have to meet the two problems. And the one of the big one is, is it a matter of public concern? Um, and if the answer to that is yes, then regardless if it's the proper place to address that forum, um, to address that particular issue, if it's a matter of public concern, or it could be a matter of public concern, you've created a, let there be light. And you created a, you created that, that platform, then they, then they are entitled to speak that way. And so it gets, it gets kind of, uh, murky when you kind of decide, like, even though there's nothing we can particularly do about that issue, um, that's not the, the standpoint in which a court would look at, would look at it. The, the standard is, have we created a public forum? We have. And is it a matter of public concern? And then that becomes really iffy. And so we, we tend to err on the side of caution in our office. So I think, um, again, for our, for our public comment portion, that would be unfortunately acceptable. However, if we're talking about the budget and that person and we allow for discussion, like the city of Waco, they allow discussion on a particular item as it's being discussed. And then a person wanted to come up and talk about something that was unrelated to the budget, we would be able to, to restrict that speech at that time, but not doing a public comment.
Mayor Pro Tem Durya.
If we were to do something like a pre-registration with the five minutes, what would we do about a group of six people come up here with one long, continuous speech? You know, all right, I'll finish my five minutes, then the next person come up with another few pages, he want to read five minutes.
So that, that is addressed by, uh, uh, some cities who have several organizations and what, and what they allow is they, they give a gr-. One, that group is required to register as a group and appoint a registered speaker. That registered speaker in some cities is giving sometimes 10 minutes, 15 minutes, or 20 minutes, but they speak for the entire group. So they're not like, and now my friend, and now my friend. So it's one speaker. Um, uh, but that's again for, um, for our groups speaking on a particular item. Um, there are some cities that do allow for, uh, presentations to be presented to council and they give a, a standard flat time for presentations by council. And there, some of them varied on whether or not they required a solo speaker, if they allowed for multiple speakers, but they all had like a cap on the presentation.
Thank you, mayor. Uh, sir Ray, uh, correct me if I'm wrong, but a moment ago, did you not say that you're looking for direction from the council in regards to presentations? And if so, then for clarity purpose, could you qualify that? Because I don't, I felt like we blew past that and we never answered it. And then secondly, could you speak to the, uh, proposed change of Roberts Rules of Order?
Yes, so, um, we kind of just pointed out some things that were kind of, uh, gray areas in our agenda, in our rules of decorum. And one of them is presentations to council. Currently, um, staff kind of dictates who makes presentations. Like we have a gift of life presentation every year. If we're given a proclamation, those individuals get, get a chance to do a presentation. If staff has a report that needs to be given from an organization that did work, that's a presentation. But there isn't a, a system in place that allows for a citizen or organization to just come and present to council right now. Um, they, there's no formal process, right? So they either have to go through organizations. So there's not just a way for them to register and say, hey, we want to present this to council. Unless they're, you know, again, receiving a proclamation or some, some other, or award, other than them, uh, coming up and filling out a green card and speaking during public comment, in which case they're still limited to three minutes. So there's not a presentation requirement for citizens or a form for citizens right now. And so I was asking if council wanted to consider that because that's something that we don't have. As it relates to Roberts Rules of Order, uh, currently, like I said, our, our motion or, uh, policy is only a, a limit for making a motion and amending a motion. And there's been several instances that have come up where council wanted to table a motion or refer a motion back, um, to the city manager to direct staff to gather additional information. And there's technically not a, a form or process that council has adopted to doing that. So council has adopted a very limited, um, Roberts Rules of Order format, but it doesn't allow for all the things that Roberts Rules of Order, um, allows for. For example, calling for point of order, calling for the question, limiting time for debate, or referring an item to committee or tabling an item, um, to a different, a separate meeting. Um, like I said, the city of Port Arthur has, theirs kind of outlined in their charter. And the city of Wichita has their own, have adopted their own, um, parliamentary procedures in the form of a Roberts Rule of Order. So they have a very, um, structured format for how motions are made, motions are amended, and motions are tabled or, or items are removed from the agenda. I'm going to again, and that's just to allow for efficiency in the meeting and for clarity.
Well, you're talking about our procedure and decorum policy and then also the presentation that you just mentioned. What action are you needing from us? Or are you wanting to make recommendations to us concerning both of these things? The presentation and, and the Roberts Rules of Order, expanding what we presently have? How, how do we move forward with those two items?
So if council said, uh, you know, no, we kind of like it the way it is, we don't want a presentation. If people want to make a presentation, they can do it in three minutes and I need no action. But if that's something that council, uh, is interested in exploring, then we would just need to know, you know, yes, you want to before, and I can come back with some recommendations of how, again, we kind of presented how other cities have did it, or what will work best for the city. If, um, council wants to, again, explore some additional Roberts Rules of Order procedures, or if you're saying no, we just kind of want to wing it, then we don't have to write in a formal process, but we just kind of need to know, uh, what you want to do.
As a city attorney, are you recommending that we expand our procedure and decorum policy now? Would you like to see us expand it with Roberts Rules of Order a little?
Yes, or at least some version. And the reason for that is, it's, um, again, when, when items are, are wanting to be removed and there's no formal process for removal, I think that that kind of creates, or could create some tension or some confusion for council if items are being removed, um, or being tabled, um, but aren't really given some direction on how that needs to happen. That kind of creates. And then when you have a council member who's calling for the question or for a point of order and that's not outlined how that needs to be addressed or be handled, then it creates, again, some meeting tension and confusion.
Can you come back with some recommendations as our attorney? That you would, things you would recommend that we consider to add to our present policy?
Yes, sir.
Thank you. Thank you, mayor.
Thank you. Councilmember Turner.
And I understand the Roberts Rules of Order perspective, but even from the presentation perspective, uh, you didn't speak to what your thoughts as far as the presentation. I know you've done a lot of research. So as far as a presentation, what are like your thoughts on some of your suggestions, madam attorney?
So just based on what, you know, council said in terms of being able to have an open and transparent communication with, uh, with citizens. One, I think that, again, for, um, that would be if you're going to, to consider pre-registration at all, it definitely needs to be for presentations. Um, and if council is going to allow citizens to do presentations, um, to council, then there needs to be a pre-registration just so that allows for effective planning of the meeting. But also they're most likely going to have handouts and they're most likely going to have visual aids that'll give the clerk a chance to, you know, collect those and have those ready for council prior to the meeting. Um...
Well, me personally, similar to Roberts Rules of Order, I'd like for you to kind of come back with a recommendation about the presentations that you requested, if it's okay with the will of the council. I think that way it can be better served and we can, we can basically accomplish what you set out to do with this workshop.
No other discussion? Okay. The city manager, will you take us into our second workshop?
Thank you, mayor. Uh, the second work session is to review and discuss the Capitol Parks Improvement Plan. During the budget process, council allocated approximately 1.4 million dollars to be spent on city parks. Uh, at the, uh, time of approval of the budget, we didn't have that list completed. So we requested that we be able to come back at a future date to have that discussion with, uh, the council. Uh, today we're prepared to have that discussion. Uh, there's been input provided by, uh, advisory council, staff members, and we have, uh, some, uh, projects to talk to you about today. Our Parks Director, Mr. Jimmy Neal is going to come and, and give you that presentation. Uh, a lot of thought was put into this, where we, we tried to address all geographic areas of the city, all wards, areas of the city, all, uh, demographics of the city. So, uh, we're trying to make the most use out of 1.4 million. In, in the scheme of things, it's not a lot of money for, for parks activities. It, it's a good amount to put a dent in some c- critical areas. Uh, but to really look at really long-term planning, at some point, we're going to have to look at some other mechanisms to do that. But today, uh, Mr. Neal is going to talk to you about those projects.
Thank you.
Good afternoon. Perfect day to talk about parks. It's 48 degrees and drizzly. So, um, I've created a little, just a small packet. In this packet, you're going to see, um, what our projects are, what we've come up with, um, plus just a, a little bit of information because of all the projects that we're proposing, uh, we don't have numbers for all of them just yet. Um, we've got to get multiple quotes, we've got to do some other things. But, um, we, we know what the number is going to be. We've got a great idea, um, of, of what the overall total is going to be. But, um, you'll see a little bit in that packet and I'll go over that with you here in a second. Um, first, what I'd like to do is, is just, just thank you. Thank you for this opportunity. Um, because that's what this is. I mean, normally our capital budget for parks has been anywhere from 80 to about $170,000 every year. So to have 1.4 million, obviously, little difference. Um, this is going to give us a, a huge, I keep repeating the r- the word opportunity, but that's what this is. It's a great opportunity for us internally. It's a great opportunity for citizens, um, for the people that, that love this city to see some things that we can do to, to really upgrade our parks, um, in, in certain things that we have in them. Um, this, as city manager Williams said, uh, came from some suggestions from the Parks and Recreation Advisory Board, some suggestions from members of city council, um, and from some staff and administration suggestions as well. Some of these were pretty recent. You know, some of this that we're asking for has come about in the last two months. And some of this we've needed for five, six years. So, uh, without further ado, I'll just kind of go down the list for you. Not want to bore you to death with, with reading what you have, but here's where we're going. Um, Combes Park is in Ward One. We've, we've chosen parks throughout the entire system. Um, we've got each ward covered, um, some more than others. Combes Park, last year we removed, Combes had kind of two playground structures. We removed one last year that just, it wasn't very good. It wasn't safe. It was not a really old structure, but it was one that we purchased kind of on a discount and it just wasn't a great piece of equipment. We ended up taking it out last year with the intent of, of replacing it soon. Um, it's a smaller piece of equipment. It, it should be a pretty easy move. Um, and we've got, we know exactly what we're looking for, for that. The athletic complex, this is one of the new ones that just came about. Um, the scoreboards that we have at the softball fields are, are pretty old, um, some over 15 years old. Um, in order to run our softball league and a lot of the events that we run throughout the year, we need, we need six new scoreboards minimum. Um, we initially said we wanted to get nine, but in, in kind of having some discussions over the last few days, we can definitely get by with six. Uh, the ones on complex four, we're a little bit sh- unsure of because, as you know, complex four, the lights came down a, a year, year and a half ago. We're in the process of getting those back up and running. So we haven't used complex four in a year and a half. Um, but we feel pretty confident those, those scoreboards are going to be good. So we shouldn't have to replace those. Um, also in Ward Two, Rogers Park, Dog Park, um, councilman Gitts, obviously this has come up often in, in, in your discussions up here. Um, we've got quotes from facilities maintenance. We know what it's going to take, uh, rough estimate of what the, what the cost will be. Babes Harriers Park. Babes Harriers is essentially just a big soccer field. There's 10, 11 soccer fields out there. You've got a restroom facility, you've got the Babes Harriers museum. Um, but at that location, we've never had anything for people that aren't playing soccer or football or walking the track. We've never had anything for kids to do out there if they're not participating. Um, so we really want to put in a, a playground out there and I think it would be a, a very welcome addition to what we've got at that park.
Jimmy, can kind of, right across the street from Babes Harriers, you have Ida Reed Park and there is playground equipment over there. Is that right?
Uh, I don't know if I'd call it across the street. With the people that are playing soccer, they're not going to be able to access Ida Reed that easily. There's train tracks, you've got the interstate ten across.
It's our ten.
Yes. So I think that would be a little bit tough. I mean, Cotton Woods, pretty close too. Um, Magnolia is pretty close. Um, but I think to have it on the grounds of Babes Harriers with as many people to play soccer out there and some of the events that go on, we've had flag football, you've had some other things that have taken place. I just think it would give a, a great opportunity for other kids to utilize it.
Would that take away some of the soccer fields?
No, sir.
Okay.
No, sir. There's, there's, there's room to put one.
And when you, uh, took out the playground equipment at Combes Park, did you, uh, come before council for that? Or is that a decision you made in-house?
I did not make that decision personally. That was an administration decision.
Okay.
I have a question.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, you said it was a small playground set? In good working condition?
No, not a compass. No, that one wasn't good. That's the one we took out because it was, it was, we were having to do a lot of repairs on it. And it was one that we bought, like I said, we kind of got it as a discount.
Right.
It was from a, a group that we typically don't buy from and we have not bought from them since. It just, it wasn't a real good piece of equipment.
Okay.
Moving on, so after Babes Harriers, we, we've talked about Charlton Pollard. Everyone knows that we've closed the playground there. Um, what you've got in your packet is the choice that we've made for Charlton Pollard. Um, that is, we had two options. That's the one that we've chosen to go with. Um, it's a, it's a very good replacement for what was, what's currently there that needs to come out. And, uh, you see what we've got there and that's, that's in, in Ward Three. Central Park in Ward Four.
One moment, hold on.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, before you move on from Charlton Pollard.
Mm-hmm.
Okay, is this one piece or two separate pieces that we're looking at?
You've got the, the one tall piece in the center and off to the side, you've got three or four smaller amenities that, when you put in a playground, you've got to have what's called a fall zone. You can't just throw the playground in and, and, you know, put it around this and, if, if this was a footprint here, this kind of, this, I guess for lack of a better term, a dais. And if if this was a footprint here, this kind of, this, I guess for lack of a better term, a diastate, I'm looking at, is that what it really, podium? Podium would be better. You can't put a playground all the way to the end. You've got to have a fall zone. And so you can't put items up against the the, I guess, the curb for lack of a better term. So yes, ma'am, that's that's a structure and then some other smaller things on the outside that that allow for kind of individual stuff. Because what you get a lot of times with these playgrounds is you get, you get some kids that that don't want to play with a bunch of others. They want to be able to do some things by themselves. So what you see is a bunch of different photographs of the same piece of equipment. And the the smaller things that you see on the side.
Okay, so it's two separate pieces of equipment, correct?
One large piece of equipment. If you look at this picture here, that will show you the, yes, sir, kind of shows you from above. What it's going to look like. And you see the the surrounding, kind of the hash marks around it, that's your fall zone that has, that's got to be met. I would love to put swings in every single park because even at my size, I would still love to get on a swing. No one wants to watch, actually, probably everybody wants to watch that. But I don't think it's a good idea for me to get on one. Um but if you're going, you've got to have a fall zone for a swing. I think it's even twelve feet. It it goes outside, but just your normal playground structure, you've got to have a a zone where if someone tumbles off, they're not going to hit that curve. They're not going to get to the edge.
So my question is, there was not enough space to include swings?
Not in that small footprint, there's not.
Okay, so, but there's enough space in the park that we could enlarge it, correct?
We could do swings elsewhere and we've done that at different parks. We put some swings in at Gusman Park a few years back. Um we added some swings down at uh Colliers Ferry Park a few years back, things that weren't initially part of the plan. What we've been tasked with at Charlton Pollard is to replace the playground and to take that piece out and replace it with something new. And that's what you're seeing here in the packet is a replacement for that. Could we go in and put a swing set? Sure, we could. Sure, we could. Obviously, it's going to cost some money, but swing sets aren't that expensive.
Okay, also, um what is the longevity of this playground equipment?
The one that's out there right now is.
No, not the one that's out there right now.
The one that's there now is eighteen years old. Um so usually, these things run, I mean, you're dealing with southeast Texas weather. You're dealing with humidity, you're dealing with the heat, you're dealing with the elements. Um I think ideally, you're shooting for hopefully fifteen years with all these. You can get longer depending on the the material. Um some are not going to be that long.
So manufacturer suggestion is fifteen years?
I think that's what you would hope for. I think they probably look at a ten to fifteen year window.
Okay. Uh Councilmember Turner.
Hey, Jimmy, is this shade at the top?
Those are smaller covers, yes, sir.
Okay, yeah, I think that that's real good. Uh that particular community, the reason, you know, the mayor brought up swings is they had. Meats and things that had magnitude and that's something kind of specifically they asked for. I noticed like some of these smaller uh play zones that you say is in the fall zone. Is this included in the overall price? Is this additional to the playground equipment price?
That's all part of the.
It's all part of the package?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
No, if we're going to do something outside of this footprint, kind of the area that we see that we closed off. Um if we're going to do something outside of their swings or whatever it may be, that would be an an added price. Because that's not part of what we planned initially.
Okay, well, just, that's the only thing I I would like to see, since I know they asked for it, if there's something we can possibly explore.
Heard anything about that, but I'm sure we could.
Okay.
You know, swing sets, depending on the size of it, you know, you you can have some of those that have eight to twelve bays probably. It could be like whatever size of buckies you want. Um it would be probably a little more condensed, probably a two and then another two outside of that. I don't want to sit here and give you numbers and and be wrong. I'm not. I would think you could do that for probably anywhere from ten to twenty thousand, I would think. Um but I'm not sure.
Yeah, but they specifically did ask for swings to me.
I didn't hear any of that, so, and again, even if they did though, Mayor, we wouldn't be able to put them right there. If we put swings right in that location, you would, you would take up so much of the space. Um you'd have to put it in that side portion where we've put the the bigger unit right there. You'd have to take that out and do the swing set there. And you really, you're not going to be able to utilize that space very well. Swings can be placed out in the middle of the park a lot easier.
Right. Okay.
And that park has plenty of space.
It does. It have enough space for swings, that's what.
It absolutely does. I, no, no question about it.
Thank you. So you can go ahead and continue.
Okay.
What is the um the playground set, what is that sitting on? What is this material, this brown stuff in the picture?
That in the picture? Well, that's that's just manufactured um wood fiber.
That's what's going to be?
We call it kitty cushion.
That's what it'll be, that's what it'll be there?
Yes, sir, that's what it'll be there.
Okay. And I'm uh since I already have the pictures here, I'm on under Ward Four, you said the shelter. Spock Park Shelter, is it going to be comparable to this size or it's going to be bigger?
I do not know.
You don't?
I'm really not sure. That's, this was something, this was something you you asked for, so I don't have any specs as far as that goes. We discussed that last week and decided that we would add that um as another option. Um that's something that more than likely is going to be done through our facilities maintenance. They'll go out and get the quotes and figure out what it's going to be. I know there's two shelters at Charlton Pollard. There's the one right there that you see in the picture that's adjacent to the playground. Then there's another one that's further over.
Yeah.
If we're going to build one and and I'm probably going to be out of line, Keith, for saying this, um or not give an accurate number. I would think with what you're looking at to ensure and get windstorm and all those, you're looking over two hundred thousand dollars at least. To build something of that size in another park. I mean, that that structure at Charlton Pollard is huge. That really is, and there's two of them there, which we don't have at very many other locations, but that is a, that is a big, big shelter. That you can fit a lot of stuff under there and people use it like crazy.
They do.
So um these suggestions, did this come from, was this a combination of you and the Parks Committee? Did they actually go out and look at some of this stuff and come up with some of this?
We've spoken with Parks Parks and Rec Advisory Board, City Council Recommendations, and then ours in-house as well.
Well, it's okay though, um with two hundred thousand for a spot park, that's fine.
Well, thank you very much, Mayor Proton. No problem, it's fine. That's good, Chris. Uh Councilmember Felsch.
Jimmy, the material that you referred to, the wood chips, is that correct? Uh they also have a material that's like chipped up rubber, the little black uh, I know the longevity of that.
Kind of like rubber molds.
Yeah, it's, it's, so my question is, is going to a material like that, is that just cost prohibitive?
Um it would cost a lot more. We we have the the kitty cushion in-house. We've got that. We get it every year. Um and and one advantage to what we do here, there's a lot of cities that, when they go in and take out that playground structure at Charlton Pollard, for example. The contractor does it. In in many cities, the contractor pulls it out, contractor removes all the wood fiber. The contractor puts the new structure in and then puts all the new fiber down. That costs a lot of money. We do it in-house. We'll pull the old structure out, we'll take out the material that needs to be taken out, get it leveled off so they can come in and do the install. And then we'll put the wood fiber back in. Saves us a lot of money and it also gives us a chance to add a few more little amenities here and there. Okay.
I have another uh question. So if we incorporate swings uh at Charlton Pollard. Can it be in the same proximity with the playground that's being proposed?
Uh it's close as we could. I mean, we'd need to, we'd need to look at that.
Right.
Um we don't want to put it far on the other end of the park.
Right, you don't want it so separated because if you have kids of different ages and sizes or even if the parents would like to. Get on the swing, you want them to be able to be.
Cameras that we're talking about, if we're going to watch parents on the swing, I want to see that.
Well, I would, and I'm a grandparent, so anyway, um. If it was in the same close proximity and of course, you have to have the fall space. But just so that it could be, yeah, so it's not so far spaced out.
The smaller the swing, the less the fall zone requirement.
Right.
Um but if you're going to put swings out there, you don't want just swings for, you know, two to six-year-olds. I think you would like to have swings that some of the older kids could get on or even, again, the parents could do it or grandparents. Um so that that really expands what you have to do requirement-wise to be able to get to that fall zone.
Okay. Thank you.
Sure.
Uh Councilmember Samuel.
Now, I'm back to the question of uh the wood chips versus the rubber. All of this is loose, is that correct?
Yes, sir.
Okay, and as far as replacement, how how long uh would the wood chips necessarily be? Before having to replace?
It lasts, it lasts just fine and we we refill it at different points during the year. When it starts to go down or it goes away, it blows away, we can have tons of rain and it can go out, it can drain. Some kids will take it with them. I've seen kids put them in their wagons and pull them off to go build in other places of the park. So we have to kind of refill those throughout the year. Um it's just one thing we do throughout our playground system where we've got to add more material. Kids come down slides and kids swing and they kick it out, so it's something that we've got to replace throughout the year.
Does, i- is there a difference between the rubber and the uh wood chips as far as uh the potential for harm to the children?
They're both safe. I mean, they're both approved by the, I don't know what the germs issue would be in the in the wood chips.
You're outside playing. We're not going to worry about the germs. We're just going to bring some ant sanitizer and cleanup.
As long as they don't eat them.
Yeah.
I would recommend against it, but you never, I said, they disappear, so you never really know. If somebody drops their lollipop, they're probably going to, five-second rule, they're probably going to get a little bit of wood chip on their lollipop.
God kiss it. Councilmember Getz and then Mayor Proton.
Jimmy, you you said you've got some uh preliminary quotes on some of these things. Can we run through those so we kind of know what money we're talking about? Like on Combes Park, what is the place, playground replacement looking to cost?
Well, honestly, and Mr. Williams, I'll.
Yeah, and I thought we were going to have that information for you at the diastate. We're, we're reluctant to talk about it right now publicly. Because of bidding and issues, but we'll give you that information and if we have some copies, if we can get some copies, I don't see.
Okay.
And we'll get you that information, Council.
Okay, thank you.
On on the proposed estimates and they're strictly estimates right now.
Yes, sir. I've got a good idea of what the range is. You know, we've we've already met with contractors about it, so we know. It's 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 a smaller piece of equipment. It's not going to be a super large thing.
Well, the reason, I I mean, you know, we've got one point four million dollars and, you know, we kind of have to have idea of.
We have an idea. I mean, we we, when we met upstairs, when when, this has been months in the making, as you all know, there's been so many emails and discussions about this. This isn't a whim. This isn't a, hey, let's get together tomorrow and throw these things out. There's a lot of things that we haven't been able to include here. Um that we would love to have done, but you can't do everything. It's, there's just no way possible that we could and.
Well, make sure you save the two hundred thousand for.
Yeah, he's, you know, he's earmarked it, so we'll just, you know, we don't really have much, much say-so.
Now, of course, if you want to talk about it, we will toss the numbers out. It's up to you if that's what you want to do.
Well, I mean, I just.
Just, just only because again, we want to, you know, maintain the the integrity of the bidding process and ensure that the city gets the the best. Um value. It's hard to do if we've already kind of given the contract or the keys um to to.
I understand that.
So um so the the, I guess, the the purpose was just to kind of give council a background to kind of see where you are. Just know that there was some, some financial astuteness in in putting this together and when it comes back to council after it's been properly bid it. You'll see um that we're, that we've done our due diligence.
There's, there's some things when you get through this list though that I I know personally, I'd like to see us consider. Whether it means elimination of some of these recommendations uh or not. But uh there are definitely things that I know Councilmember Turner and I've talked about, uh that we'd like to see be considered by the council as a whole. And uh so, you you know, it's, this is a great list. Uh it's not necessarily a a list of everything that I want to say. It's a, but it, but it's a good list and, you know. I'm looking forward to being able to jump in with some of the other ideas.
Well, we understood that that we weren't going to get everything. You know, there was no way. I mean, it's, there's so many things that we had on a list that we would love to have. But we just don't have the, we don't have the money to do it. So what we've had to do is is really try to sort of throw some numbers together. And come up with something that we know is going to fit. We've, we left probably about a hundred thousand dollar contingency. So some of these things end up going a little bit over, we understand that. Some of these things could come in less and it's going to give us an opportunity to add something. Um but again, for years, as I've said, I'm used to getting eighty to a hundred fifty, a hundred sixty thousand dollars. This is a lot different. You know, some of these things that we're asking for cost more than what we were getting in two and three years. So it's it's a huge opportunity for us to do it and the longer we wait, the less chance we're going to have to be able to do it.
I'll I'll come to you, Councilmember Neal, but I have a question.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, all of the items, are we at the one point four million?
We're just a little bit, a little below it right now. If everything comes in where we expect it will, we're a little bit below. And again, that's where that contingency comes in, that we know there can be a little bit of leeway here and there.
Right. Uh and one other thing, when will all of this start? Will it start before the year end?
Once we get approval, we'll start moving on it.
Okay.
You know, we we can't, I can't very well have a, go into an agreement with the contractor when we don't have approval to move on it. We know what we want done. Um you know, it's just a question of getting it.
So once we give the final okay, then it goes into effect?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, thank you. Councilmember Neal.
So thank you, Mayor. That answered one of my questions, just wanting to know uh if this all fit within the one point four six million dollar budget. Uh my next question was, on this drainage study for the golf course. Is it the desire of the council to move forward with that or is this just going to be another study we get and put on the shelf? Because this is going to be, I mean, we beat this dead horse a thousand times.
Also, what is the cost for it?
Well, thi- this is one that we actually do have a quote for. We've gotten two. And we don't need to necessarily get a third because it's for professional services. Um this is something we've, we started working on, I believe in twenty nineteen. We had a firm come in from Houston. And then last year, I met with another group that gave us another number. What this is, is they're going to go in and do a study of the golf course. And show us, we know drainage is our biggest problem. Um the rain that we've had even today, which probably is almost immeasurable. Um we closed the golf course or it would make it to where it'd be cart path only. If you're not a golfer, you don't really know what that is. But if you play golf, that means you're, you can't drive your path, your cart off of the path. And for the majority of golfers, especially in southeast Texas, if it's car path only, that means you're staying home.
You closed it today for just this little rain?
No, it's not closed. It would close to where it'd be car path only.
Car, but, but just off of this rain?
With the rain we had yesterday, in addition to today and what we had Saturday, it's one hundred percent, I can guarantee it's car path only.
But we already know that's, that that's a problem.
Yes, ma'am, and this study would give us the opportunity to, to allow us to find out exactly what needs to be done.
That's my point. I mean, I I have no doubt that the study is going to tell us what needs to be done, but the problem is, are we going to do anything with that study?
I would wish. My fingers would be crossed that we would. Um and and.
I'm going to go out on a limb and say probably not.
I don't want to say that up here. I'll let you say it. Um I don't want to say that, but.
Oh, but the purpose of the study is so that we could correct the problem and I'm sorry.
Know what it's going to take.
Well, and and I understand Councilmember Neal's concern because that's my concern too, because it's not, it's not a a little number either.
No, it would be a very large number.
And is that priority for right now?
And so. We have to look at, we have to look at it as a council and see if it is priority.
Yeah, I can tell you.
Golfers, yeah, well, I'm getting ready to say, for golfers, it is a priority.
Sure, we would think it would be great because it would give us an opportunity to be open essentially year-round, but that's not a decision, unfortunately, that. That's not a decision we get to make. That's not something that my staff gets to just say, let's do it. We we need direction from from you guys, so. Um but getting this study done is definitely the first step for us finding out, for us seeing what it really is going to take. It it may shock us that it's lower than we thought. I doubt it. I mean, what is? Nothing nowadays is less than you anticipate. But if it were to be that way, I think it's a great opportunity for us to find out and what it's going to show us is really where our deficiencies are. We can walk out there and tell you that this needs to be raised up or we need to dig a ditch here. But as we've talked about before, this golf course was designed by the Army Corps of Engineers. If you know the Army Corps of Engineers, they're not known for their golf course designing. It's the only golf course, to my knowledge, they ever built. So when they built it, their, their thought wasn't, hey, this course is going to last seventy, a hundred years. And we're trying to get thirty thousand rounds a year or what have you. They just probably needed something to do with open space. And they provided us with a a very fun golf course. It's the first place I ever played. But, you know, we're we're a little bit hamstrung when we do have rough weather and since COVID, a lot of people have have been playing golf. And when the weather cooperates, we've seen that our course gets. And when the weather cooperates, we've seen that our course gets incredible numbers. And um when we have those couple of months without rain, we're breaking records, but when it rains, we're back going the other direction.
Has, has there ever been a study done?
No, ma'am.
Never?
There's never been a drainage study like this done at that golf.
So let me ask you this. So do we have the original plans from the Corps of Engineers when they built the, the golf course?
That's a great question. Um, I don't know.
We could go back and look at it rather than spending the large number that it's gonna require to fix it. Because if we have the blueprint of the golf course when it was built, that would give some indications of your highs and your lows.
My guess would be that when they built it in the 1930s, they probably weren't really that concerned with it. Um, but if we can find that, it'd be, it'd be good information to have.
And you would have to have current survey. Um, I believe the study.
Because of the, the change.
Had LiDAR uh, you know, survey of the ground and you've got to know where the slopes are, where you can bring the water off today. And as we know, soil changes in southeast Texas, things subside, other things could build up. So you've got, before you go in and you start undertaking to pull the water out, you have to know exactly where you've got to put channels and drainage uh for it. So you have to have a study for today.
Councilmember Neil, I'm sorry.
Thank you, ma'am. So my, my thoughts on this thing, moving forward, and I know everybody hates to have additional meetings, but with this kind of being the initial wishlist and really no cost associated yet for us to be able to see, is for us to get the proposed amount for each one individually and then have some type of joint meeting between the council and the parks advisory committee. Cause I think it's important to have those guys input in this, cause I mean, they dedicate a lot of time to this as well. And for us to just kind of assign some type of numbering system to this, so we can try to get as much done as possible collectively.
Councilmember Gitts, Mayor Protim, Councilmember Turner.
My understanding with regard to the golf courses is for decades, we didn't have a drainage issue out there. And is, is that correct or has it been since the 1930s that we've had drainage problems out at Terrill Parker? Do you know?
I do not know.
Okay.
I don't know. I mean, I've, like I said, I've, I've, to say I've played golf out there for four years, that's when I started playing golf. But was I out there all the time? No, sir, I was not. But I know that since I've been here, since I've been with the city, which is over 11 years, it's always been a huge issue.
Okay.
Also, I've had guys, these older guys have been playing out there for years. You know, even had a couple of them stop by my house after they finished playing to complain about the drainage. That's, that's a normal problem out there. The way I look at it, if we're going to have a golf course, we might as well do it the right way. Might not be a priority, but eventually if we're gonna have and maintain the golf course, we should strive for it to be one of the best golf courses in the area. And, you know, I mean, why, why, don't do it halfway. If we're gonna have it, let's do it the right way. Also, um, the playground equip, the other playground equipment like a Combes Park, Central Park, especially Central Park, is it gonna be similar to Chalk and Pollard? The playground equipment?
Probably not. Um, what we would love to do at Cent, at Central Park is something a little bit different. Um, we've talked about it at the advisory committee and in some other discussions about maybe some type of um variations of like Ninja Warrior course and just, there's, there's so many options. Uh, there's so many different options you can do. It's a pretty good sized footprint out there at Central Park. So ideally what we would love to do is kind of take one portion of it and make it sort of your typical playground structure. That's, that's um ADA accessible and, and meets all the requirements, of course. Um, but then on the other side, make it more of a, an activity based type of structure. What we currently have is a very, very large footprint. My opinion is that it's a little bit larger than it needs to be. Some of those, those portions, we could probably just put grass down and, and be okay and, and kind of centralize what we currently have. But it's, it is a, it's a very big structure. What's currently there is gigantic. Um, and we don't, we don't want to put something else that looks just like that. We want to do something a little more modern, something a little more fun.
Also, um, I agree with Councilman Neil on involving the Parks Advisory Committee in these decisions. They, they're out there and they go to these parks and uh I hear from them quite often. They have some great ideas associated. They should be involved. One other thing, it's not on the list and I think it's something that needs to be looked at. I've got more than one person asked me about, when we spoke about um putting artificial turf on a few of the uh fields out at the athletic complex because of the, the rain outs. I'm pretty, I don't know today with the rain we had yesterday and today, could they play a tournament out there tomorrow?
Underwater.
Exactly.
Those fields are completely underwater. I was out there last night. They were standing water everywhere.
And when they have tournaments that's scheduled for those weekends and we have, they bringing in hundreds of teams from all over the country. And then they get down here and they have to cancel. That's, that's money.
Well, we've gotten some quotes to turf three infields and it's, we're looking at low end, 1.1 million dollars, low end. So um that's just turf in the infield. That doesn't necessarily guarantee that you're gonna be able to play. I mean, if the outfield's underwater and that's just doing the turf, you, you'd have to really kind of do some more work out there. So you're, it's a pretty big number.
Just speaking to some of the folks that actually play, give those tournaments, they've said if they could, they would, they're not so much worried about the outfield. If they get the infield to where they could play on it, then they could continue with those tournaments. And I'm, I'm pretty sure I'll get um Mr. Williams to find that money for you.
Well, you are just full of money, aren't you? We need to hang around with, with Councilman Durya.
I think Mayor Protim Durya has had his turkey already.
I'm gonna leave that one alone.
Cause he's full of it. Councilmember Turner.
Hey, Oil Force should be proud. Chris asking for all the budget.
Yeah.
But I, I will say, man, you know, in 2021, this council sat in its chambers and we had a workshop. And we identified, you know, what we considered were our top 10 parks in the area based upon traffic. Then we went on to say, we wanted the Parks Advisory Board to be more involved. And I think the whole council said this upfront and we made the suggestion that the Parks Committee would go out, observe the parks, come back and make a recommendation as a whole to what needs to be done. And that's what I want to know, this list, was it a result of that direction or if, and if not, what took place to get us away from that?
Some of it was. Some of it, I've got an email from the advisory board president or chairperson um that included some of these things on this list. As I said when we started, that this is a combination of Parks and Rec Advisory Board suggestions, some of your suggestions and some of our suggestions. There's, there's only nine things. It could be three, three and three. I mean, it's, some of them are a combination. Some of them were, we wanted it, Parks Board wanted it. Um, no council members singled out Central Park, Imagination Station, because you knew how much we wanted it. Um, but I think as a council, you probably would want that to be done. Um, so to say that one person chose that I think would be inaccurate because the board wanted it, we wanted it, you guys wanted it, so it kind of meets all the criteria.
So how did the board get to this point? Did we go out and observe the parks or did we just, are you saying we sent that? Yeah. Yeah, that's what I want to know. Did we do what we gave the direction?
We did not do that.
Okay.
We've, people have the opportunity to go to these parks. Have we done it as a committee? No, we have not. We have not gotten everybody into a bus or a van to go and look at these parks. Um, we usually have three, maybe four peo- people on the committee that show up at the meetings. Those are the same people that are active when we send out emails, when we send out the monthly report, those are the same people that respond. There's a lot of people on that board that have never attended a meeting and have never responded. So my personal opinion is if we're gonna have people involved with making these decisions that have never participated, I don't really know why we would go that route. You know, I feel like we need people that are active, that are involved. In the emails that I've gotten from the advisory board, recommended some of these same things.
And I think that'd be good for council members to know, if you have appointments that aren't showing up, that aren't active, I think it would be wise to whoever oversees that are sent, let us know. Because the reality is, you may have council members up here who may not be aware that their attendees aren't attending. I'm in contact with my appointments, but if, if council members aren't aware, they might not know that what we instructed as a body to take place didn't take place because of attendance.
Let me follow up on that, Mayor, because.
Well, go, go ahead.
I mean, there were people at the last advisory board meeting that didn't even know where some of these parks were. And I agree with you that some of the people that are on the advisory board have never, ever attended a Parks Advisory Board Committee meeting. So, yes, AJ, I, I mean, I, obviously we can't make any council member do anything with regard to their appointees. But it is uh difficult to have opinions from throughout the city because every council member is entitled to appoint two people uh on the board. If some council members appoint, he's just never show up, you know, they're, they're not being represented. That part of the city's not being represented.
Okay. Councilmember Samuel, and then I'll speak after that.
Yeah, well, I had a citizen that is watching and uh the question, how many of the parks do not have restrooms?
I don't have that answer for you.
Okay, that would be important to know because there's a question about Pine Street Park.
Well, it's, it's, Pine Street Park is, is a neighborhood park and there may be one throughout the system, but none of the other neighborhood parks have restrooms. Um, there is a citizen that has called me multiple times about that or a couple of citizens and I've explained that to them and they've been, you know, understanding. Um, they get it. They understand the, the definition and kind of the, the different types of parks that have different types of amenities.
Excuse me, and I don't mean to be rude to interrupt you. People are not aware of a neighborhood park versus a community park. And that question came up last night at, 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 at the Neighborhood Association meeting last night. Please, yes.
Define the difference.
The difference in a neighborhood park, because people are under the assumption that
A, a park is a park.
All parks are the same.
Well, when they've called me, I've explained to them what the difference is. Um, I don't think it's a dereliction of duty for me not to have a definition in front of me for the difference between them. Um, but there's different things that are expected. A neighborhood park is more one that it's expected that you're probably gonna walk or ride your bicycle to. Um, and not ride your bicycle, meaning a six or seven mile ride, but neighborhood.
Across the street, down the street.
And whereas a community park is a little bit more, it's, it's similar to what we have our community centers. Um, obviously John Paul Davis is different because it's at a library. There's no park there. But Central Park, Rogers Park, Alice Keith Park, those are all community parks. Um, they've got restrooms, they've got other amenities as well, but those are more. I will say, I don't want to use the term destination parks because that's a little bit inaccurate, but that's kind of, I guess, a little bit of the definition of it.
That was a big, major question last night at the Neighborhood Association meeting.
Well, and I've, I've had it. They've, they've called me and, and everyone that's called to ask about it at Pine Street especially, they've been very receptive and very polite, thankfully. There's so many people that call us that are none of those things. Um, but the, the women that I've spoken to have been great. They, they understand when I explain it to them. And they saw it makes sense. You know, if you're expected to kind of walk over there, you can probably walk back to the restroom. Um, so if I were to say, well, you can just go down to Collier's Ferry. No, if you walk to Pine Street, why would you walk to Collier's Ferry? It's probably closer to walk to your house to go to the restroom. So I can understand that. Uh, building restrooms in these parks, you're probably looking, I would guess, a quarter of a million dollars to build a restroom facility. That would be my guess. Again, that's Keith's area of expertise, more so than mine.
And then they have to be maintained.
Sir.
And then they have to be maintained.
Absolutely, absolutely.
Yeah, then the restroom costs more than everything in the park and the amenities.
That's just the way it goes.
In a neighborhood park.
Yes, ma'am.
Yes. Councilmember Turner.
Jimmy, this one came up as well last night at the Neighborhood Association meeting about restrooms, uh Magnolia Park, but I know we do have a pool that has restrooms. If, if the restrooms at the pool open during park hours, you just guys only open it up during pool hours?
No, it's, it's, it's accessible from the outside.
Okay, so it actually is open during park hours?
Yes, sir.
Okay, thank you.
Plus during park hours, the Pruitt Centers, Pruitt Center closes eight or nine o'clock and parks are, are supposed to close at 9:00 PM. Um, people don't always follow that, but parks are essentially closed at 9:00 PM. Easier in the summertime for people to be there a little bit later, but I mean, right now it's dark by 5:30, so um, yeah, we try to get those to where they have the access. Um, Magnolia Park is one where you can still access the restrooms.
So the, the park time doesn't change with the change of, of the time?
No, ma'am. It's essentially, we use the term sunup to, sunup to sundown, but by definition, I believe the ordinance states that they close at 9:00 PM. Um, we've got that at certain parks where we know people tend to frequent at night after dark. We've put some signs up that say that. Rogers Park, it's got it up. I saw it yesterday. Um, just reminding people, hey, you're not supposed to be out here past nine o'clock. Um, when they're in a neighborhood, that's something you're definitely gonna deal with. You get citizens that will call and say, hey, they're out playing tennis or basketball or running around at 9:30 at night. You know, that's just one of those things you deal with.
Right.
Um, I'll finish the list if it's okay. Um, just so everyone can hear. The other locations that we, we've talked, we've covered all these in our discussion. Um, Central Park, um, replacing Imagination Station, Henry Harmer Golf Course, Drainage Study, Sprott Park, a covered shelter, part of the 6 million that counts that uh Mayor Protim Durya wants. Um, and also what we did uh last year at Rogers Park by resurfing that basketball, surfacing the basketball court. We want to do another one of those. Haven't really decided yet. You know, I listed, you see here Magnolia or Central. There's probably a few others we could consider. Um, I think those two really jump out at me. We're willing to take recommendations on all that. Councilman Turner, obviously you kind of spearheaded that last year and, and if you want to stay on that, that's perfectly fine. We're okay with that. Um, it, it providing some direction. Um, City Manager Williams mentioned that we want to put a little bit more in there. That way we can finish putting glass basket, blast, glass backboards, shouldn't be that hard to say, throughout the city. We're pretty close to that anyway. Um, in our current budget system, we're, that's what we're expecting to be able to do by the end of the year. So I don't think we'll have to dig into this 1.4 million, but if we need to, it's there for that as well. But we want to be able to resurface another court. Um, as we've seen what's gone on at Rogers, it's done really well and, and people have really taken to it. So, um, again, I think maybe we have other questions on this. I'm not sure. Right now, we just covered a lot of it. That's all I've got here. Um.
Jimmy, I do have another question.
I knew it.
Um, and it's, and, and I guess it's not a park, but at the tennis facility, the basketball court there. So does that fall into the tennis facility or does it fall under park?
We consider it as part of the athletic complex. That's just, that whole entire area is considered athletic complex. Like when you pull into the tennis center, it says Beaumont Athletic Complex, I believe. Um, and so it's all kind of fits under the umbrella. If someone wants to play basketball out there, they say, we're playing at the complex, just whatever they say. We've replaced those goals. You know, those are now the, the glass backboards. Um, so and that's what we're trying to do throughout the entire system as much as possible.
But the resurfacing, because that bas, if you drive down College Street, that basketball court is used continuously.
It is. And, and a lot of them are. You know, there's, for whatever reason, Central Park is, is the TikTok capital of basketball videos. Anytime I'm out there, someone's out there having people film them doing their dunks or whatever it is, there's a guy out there that looks way better than I do that's out there with his shirt off over the summer and his, one of his friends, his video and everything he does and it's pretty impressive. The guy's pretty good. Um, thankfully he hasn't ripped it down yet, but um there, people use it. I mean, there's not a, there's not a court I can think of that doesn't get any use.
We only have a budget to resurface one other.
Well, that's what we're asking because as we did, y'all remember, um, when we did Rogers Park, that wasn't a budgeted item. That was something that
Right.
Council got together on and well, this would be now one that we would budget it in this, this parks enhancement, you know, capital plan. We would like to be able to include that, so we know we're gonna get it done this year. Um, it's just a question of exactly which court we would choose.
Okay.
And we would kind of defer to you on that.
Councilmember Turner, then Councilmember Samuel.
I like both the recommendations y'all have, uh, the parks, uh, the resurfaces of the court. I like the fact that it's an open concept and it bring a lot of attention from the road. So I think you guys did a good job with those recommendations. Uh, that kid that you're talking about, he has a deal with Nike and he does slam dunk contests all over the United States with ESPN, on ESPN. So, yeah, that's something to be proud of. He's right here from Beaumont.
But he's asked me for pointers a couple of times. I've helped him a little. I've given him a target to jump over. It's not hard to jump over this.
But, but I think it's one thing, I think it's one thing that I think the majority of the council has kind of discussed that's not on here. And we almost have every sport taken care of with the exception of football. And, you know, those kids, sometimes we'll see them practicing on the soccer field, sometimes we'll see them in front of Westbrook. And we have one field that we have somewhat striped and that's over there at Sprott Park. And I just wanted to see if it was of any interest of this council, since that's the only thing we really don't have. We have plenty of tennis facilities, basketball, we got a baseball complex, but the city doesn't. We have plenty of tennis facilities, basketball, we got a baseball complex, but the city doesn't have anywhere for, you know, our kids to work on those skills as far as football. I know Sprott Park, we we started it, but maybe that could be something that the council may want to look at, since we discussed funding that we're not a hundred percent sure we would dedicate to certain places. So I think, you know, maybe that may be something we need to consider as a council, because we literally have everything else covered, with the exception of that.
Okay, so I'm going to piggyback off of Councilmember Turner. Because when I sat as Ward Four Counselor, the budget did not, well, there was no budget to include that. And I've spoken to Mayor Pro Tim Duriel as recent as yesterday on this same subject. I look at our city that was previously named the football capital of the world. And we, as Councilmember Turner say, we have every sport down here except for football. And I even spoke to the city manager stating that Sprott Park is used primarily for the Little League football teams. As a matter of fact, one is going to the Super Bowl this weekend, and I, the Oilers, I got a phone call that they're going to the Super Bowl this weekend. And they use that facility, and I fought to get that one set of bleachers out there. There's no lighting, and we have to constantly get that field striped. So with our previous history of football, and we don't have any fields for the kids to practice on. Some way, somehow, we need to get that done in Ward Four. And Councilmember Samuel, I'm going to come back to you, but I'm going to go back to Mayor Pro Tim, so he could speak on that, and then Councilmember Getz.
Thank you, Mayor. You said everything that I was going to say. I just wanted to make sure that you included the lights. Stripes and lights, stripes, lights, and some more bleachers. That's what, actually, we've had Little League coaches come to us and ask us for that, for help. I mean, they need somewhere to practice and play. And all of these issues, I know they're saying I'm asked for a lot, but all of these are quality of life issues, and that's very important. That's just as important to some some folks as the streets are. You know, we want, we want to improve Beaumont. We want to improve the quality of life for Beaumont. We want people to enjoy being here and have things to enjoy doing while they're here.
Well, we want to do it for our youth.
For the youth, these, I mean, you know, you you talk about, like, the riverfront and stuff like that. These issues are for people that live here, you know, that live in its neighborhoods, you know, and that's that's what they want. They want things to do. Like you said, a park you could ride your bike to or walk to. And all these, that's what these issues are. And I would, and I really believe councilman, I mean councilman, the manager, Mr. Williams is going to find the money to get all this stuff going.
Well, I mean, I can I can say from from our perspective, from staff's perspective, the idea that that you guys are proposing us to spend, spend, spend. I'd be lying to you if I said, we don't want that, but we can't spend money we don't have.
Right.
You know, I'd love to have lights at Babe's Hareys. I'd love to have lights at the multi-use field at the athletic complex that we could potentially turn into two football fields side by side. I'd love to have lights i- in all kinds of places. I'd love to put a net along the side of the road at Terrell Park, so people can hit golf balls and not drill them at cars. But all these things take money. When I played, I played football too. I look more like a football player now than I did. But when I was at Westbrook, everyone practiced outside of Westbrook High School. People practiced at Vincent Middle School, Amelia Elementary School, anywhere you could find a place to practice, you practiced. It's no different. I coached Little League. We do the exact same thing. We just find a place. If we can find enough room, we jump out there and get it. We asked for, in this this past budget year, we asked for a piece of equipment called a turf tank. What a turf tank does is it sets up through GPS. It's a really cool little robot. And it it can go out and it can chalk a field, it can spray paint a field, a football field, with a hundred yard football field with stripes every five yards in, I think, an hour. With, you pour the the paint into it, and it does, it does it all by itself. You program it on an iPad, and it can knock it out. We've had them come out and give us demonstrations at the athletic complex, kind of did like a twenty yard football field. They can do a soccer field, baseball field, you name it. And it's cost some money to get it, but it keeps us from having to to bring three or four members of the staff out there to spend an entire day painting a football field. Using all the cans of paint, using, I mean, it's it's pretty expensive. And when you stripe a field and then you mow it, oftentimes that following week, you've got to stripe it again. So, yeah, all these things sound great. There's no way I could sit up here and go, nope, we don't want that. We would want every single thing you're talking about. But Councilman Duriel, I'm Mayor Pro Tim Duriel, I always call you the wrong thing, kind of. I just need your wallet. You know, if you're going to give us all this. That's that's where we're at.
Okay, Councilmember Samuel, and then Councilmember Getz.
Thank you, Mayor. I realize there's a lot of dreams. There's a lot of things we'd like to have, but we have to be fiscally prudent. Nobody wants to raise taxes, but we have to pay for the things that we get. Now, my my question was, do we, we still have the opportunity for our corporate sponsors to come in and make contributions to our parks, correct? That can be done, correct?
Sure, it can be done.
And do do we have anyone, have we had any corporations from Beaumont to mention they want to participate?
Haven't we even asked?
We haven't put that out.
I.
No, we've never been presented to me to to go out and ask.
Okay, well, that's that's something that we need to think about. Because I do know, I know two corporations in Beaumont that have been extremely generous in working with the city. You have not, if you ask not. Closed mouths don't get fed.
How about the Samuel Law Firm? Are they willing to donate?
Yes, I I put a dollar in there.
I knew you'd say yes.
But, you know, it it's, but that's real, because I know corporations that have individuals on some of our committees. And they are open to working with the city, so we just have to begin to ask. So that's another option, because it would be, they have, many times, they have the ability to write some things off.
Thank you. I'll be asking.
I just didn't want to call them. I'm not going to call any names, but they're listening.
Good. Listeners, call us. Thank you. Councilmember Getz.
Okay, so, you know, I don't know about having lights at the football fields, but I completely agree that it's easy, that's low hanging fruit to stripe a football field. Pearlstein Park, for instance, has lots of area that's not being used. That could be striped, and a football ground could be put out there in a million. I would encourage that. Not all sports are represented, though. We do not have a place, and I think Beaumont is the largest city in Texas, that does not have public racquetball courts. Needleland has public racquetball courts. Groves has public racquetball courts. Beaumont does not. And I think that we need to be thinking about that, and I think a logical place to put it is at the municipal tennis center, because they could check in through the the pro shop that people go through now. We wouldn't have to build restrooms, because there's restrooms in the pro shop. There's plenty of place at the back of the tennis courts to put the two racquetball courts out there. And I think you could definitely get some public participation to help with that. We used to have the downtown YMCA that was the Fisher Coconos Racquetball Center. Judge Fisher was a federal judge here for forty plus years, and Coconos family, we had a Mayor Coconos, we had a council member Coconos. You know, their families are still here. I think you could get some contributions to help fund that. But I think that is something, and I haven't played racquetball in thirty years, but maybe that's because there's no place to play racquetball. One of the things that I also wanted to talk to you about, Mr. Neal, is it's not on your list, but the Magnolia Swimming Pool. Just to show you that I'm not all for about things in World War II. That that pool has had a, well, that pool has had a slide assembly that has not worked in three years. And at the last Parks and Recreation Advisory Board, we learned that there's some real problems with the filtration system. And, you know, I understand that a lot of cities are going to the idea of splash pads and not maybe taking out swimming pools. You take out that swimming pool in that community, and you're going to have a mutiny on your hands. You you've got to, you've got to have the pool that's that's working and a proper order, and not just Band-Aid put together. It's got, we've got to be able to provide a quality pool for the kids that that live out there. There's a lot of homes in that neighborhood. That's one of the things I'd like for us to think about as a use for some of this money. While at Magnolia Park, I was out there and noticing that, and this is going to sound weird coming from a tennis player. But there are two tennis courts out there, and in talking to staff out there, they're almost never ever used. And and in that community, tennis takes a backseat to basketball. It's just the way it is. It occurred to me that it would be real easy to remove the tennis court nets and surface that as basketball courts to provide for additional basketball outside, because inside at the Pruitt, you've got leagues going on, you've got free play going on. You you might not necessarily get people inside that are going to be able to play, but they could play outside. And I would take the current existing outside basketball courts, and I would make those goals cut down for little kids, because that's right there by the playground. No, that's that's easy to do.
Guys are going to rip those down.
What? No, 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 no. I'm I'm talking about, yeah, that's it.
If you put a, if you put a low goal, let's, Councilman Turner, you know, that's true. You put a low goal out there, those kids that have no business plan on that are going to rip that thing down so quickly.
Well, I would hope not, but we got to also provide for the six and seven year old kids that not might might not be able to throw a basketball up to the ten foot level. You you could take the basketball court, the tennis courts, and you could put two full length basketball courts on those. You could, and it's got a viewing pavilion right there, Jason, too.
I really do. Those courts, those tennis courts are rarely used, but everyone up here, let's make sure we just heard Councilman Getz requesting to remove tennis courts.
I did, because they're not being used and they're not surfaced for tennis right now. You can barely see the lines.
I'm joking when I say that, obviously, because I know how serious you are about tennis. I think it's a great idea. I would love to do that. And Councilman Turner, maybe that's the route we go with that resurface. I mean, I'm sure it's going to cost more money, obviously, to put two courts there, but that would be the only place in the city where we've got two basketball courts side by side outside. That would be outstanding.
Yeah, the other things that I wanted to hit real quick is, you know, now I'm getting back to being a tennis player. We need to provide money somewhere to have the tennis courts at the athletic center resurfaced. Because a tennis court surface has to be resurfaced every four or five years. And you you need to have them in a rotation so that as as they start wearing out, you have money put aside to resurface them. Those tennis courts attract, like, Southland Conference Tennis Tournament on a regular basis. So we want to keep attracting those types of tournaments, but there were comments made at the last one that they might have to start looking elsewhere, because the surface of some of those tennis courts had deteriorated to the point where, you know, it might not meet their standards to have a Southland Conference Tournament there. And so we want to continue to resurface. As I think you said, something like twenty five thousand dollars a court to resurface, I think that's way high. I encourage you to get other bids than the vendor that you use. Last thing I wanted to talk about, again, not in World War II, but very important to me, the equestrian trails out at Terrell Park. We need to finish that. I know that you've had a shortage of asphalt that you could use, but we're about to mill Fourth Street, and you're going to get a lot of asphalt out of that project, so I hope that is repurposed to be using at the equestrian trails to extend that out there.
If if we get the millings, that's that's what we've used it for, and I feel like we've we've maximized what we can do there to this point. And we're willing to continue to do so when we get the the proper material.
I I said last night, there's one thing I overlooked, okay, and this is a little outside the box, but we have talked about it as a council before. And that's the idea of extending a linear park from Crockett Street to the Lakeside Center. You know, way back in the day, there was hopes and talks, way before I got on council, by the way, of putting a waterway down. You know, that we learned is going to be way too expensive to do. You've got infrastructure under the street that would have to be dug up. You can't do it. It's cost prohibitive, but a linear park, and I think I got that term from Chris Boone, where you have a a walkway with some water features that would go all the way from Crockett Street to the event center. There's already, the path already laid out. It would be past the Rotary Fountain, you know where I'm talking about? And alongside the front of those buildings where Coburn's used to be, we shut off that part of Crockett Street to be used as a parking lot anyway, so it's not a through street there. And then you're there. It's not that long. It's just a few blocks. But it would be in a track, with all the things we're about to do downtown, a linear park with some waterway features, fountains, and and things like that would be really a nice touch for downtown.
That's it, Mike? Okay. Mayor Pro Tim Duriel.
Real quick, I spoke to a member of my, one of my representatives on the park committee, and he had a good idea. We talk about eliminating those tennis courts, I guess, at Magnolia Park. Mike, maybe that, I mean, you're a big tennis enthusiast, maybe introducing some of those kids out there to tennis. Introducing them to picketball. A year ago, pickleball. A year ago, right sitting up right here, I asked, what's pickleball? Nah, I know. It's very popular now.
Did you play yet?
No, I haven't, but I've seen people play, and they seem to enjoy it.
You need to play.
But it just, you know, that could be something new that they could introduce the kids in in that neighborhood too. They might enjoy it. They might, they may excel in it. It's just something new, you know, that they could try. And Mike, you can, you can be the coach.
You know, a few years ago, we actually did have, as part of a summer grant from the USTA, we did hire some coaches out there at Magnolia Park, and we did. And it was, it was well received, because you had a program going there at the Sterling Pruitt already. And so we incorporated tennis into that experience, and it it was well received, but.
Might be a program y'all can start, I think.
It was kids in summer camp, just participated.
Aren't there tennis courts also at Sprott Park?
There's tennis courts at Sprott Park, yes, sir.
Same thing, though, with kids in that neighborhood, that might be something we can introduce them to. They may enjoy it. They may excel in it. You can't ever tell. Something new.
But Mayor Pro Tim, one of the things that I also have to tell you is that, right now, that's just a concrete slab with some lines that are so faint, you can barely tell it. If you want to keep those tennis courts at Magnolia Park as tennis courts, they need to be surfaced and striped.
Councilmember Turner.
Uh, last thing, and we're talking about funding, and of course, we all want a lot of things, but funding is an issue. And I spoke to Larry Spears out in Orange, Councilwoman out of Waco. They're capitalizing on a lot of their park improvements and their community centers, where they doing new rec centers for kids, they're getting grant funding for these things. I think that's something that I know me and you have had several conversations on. I know Jimmy has went for some grants prior to this meeting. I know we discussed it, but, you know, I like to see us be a lot more aggressive with grant funding, because, I mean, when we got this kind of money and this matches out there and things of that magnitude, I think we're missing out on free access that's already available, especially when you see communities right down the street within thirty miles taking advantage of it. You know, I want Beaumont to be the community everybody watch and try to repeat and go after being the biggest, so I definitely want to see us do more of an emphasis on grant funding. So, I definitely want to see us do more of an emphasis on grant funding, especially when it comes to parks. Another thing is, I know we have CDBG funding also available that we can use in low-to-moderate income areas, and they can also be funding that can be utilized for parks, where we get to see staff collaborate and see how can we put our heads together. We got money that's just sitting on the table that we're not utilizing. It makes a lot of sense, since we're talking about things that's a need when it comes to quality of life, since we're not utilizing the money. And it's sitting there, we should utilize those funds in those low-to-moderate income areas. And lastly, we'd say recreational activities. I'd kinda like to kinda go over in the future some of our recreational things we have for our kids. You know, we see our youth getting in a lot of trouble these days, and I think that recreational option, maybe a later workshop to see how we can put our heads together with Jimmy and what kind of things we could come up with. We got the gym inside of the recreational facility. And Mike was saying the lifespan of the tennis courts are four to five years. The lifespans of basketball courts for guys who actually play basketball is three to five years. UCBSD, they're doing their gym floors almost every two years. The last time, correct me if I'm wrong, Jimmy, that we addressed the recreational floor on Gold Street was in 2008, based upon, you know, research and questions I've been required. It was actually before Jimmy was there. So, I mean, that's something we also can look at as low-to-moderate income funding that we have CDBG funding for. That area would fall underneath that. So, I mean, you know, I play ball. Even me personally, I won't play on that court at the rec right now, because I'm too old to slide and take a chance of getting hurt. But, you know, we got a lot of guys that play professional ball. We got kids who play on those courts, and you're literally sliding. And to Parks and Rec's credit, y'all have maintained it as well as y'all can. But the reality is, you know, those courts have a lifespan of roughly five years, and you just resurface it. You know, just do the proper maintenance and treatment on it. But like you said, with a budget of what you've had, it's rare that you can even address those things.
Well, we are getting a new one. It's in the budget. It's in the normal budget for the year. Facilities maintenance is, it's gonna be done this year.
Okay, so, yeah, that's something people been asking, so I'm glad to hear that. All right.
The Pruitt Center Gym, gym floor's gonna be redone.
Much respect. All right, I'm being quiet now. I'm good.
Quiet side, you guys have anything?
I just wanna know where all the money's coming from.
Councilman Samuel, I didn't mean to wake you up. I apologize.
Mayor.
Okay, uh, Mr. City Manager.
Mayor, I'd just like to thank council for this discussion. This is the type of discussion we needed to have, and this brought a lot of things out. When I first opened up, one of the things I mentioned was that we were gonna talk about a lot of things, but at some point, we're gonna need more dollars to do things here in the city to make a real impact in this, in our park situation. We just have the 1.4 million, but I've heard today, I've counted probably $15 million we've talked about at this table. Or more. So, but I think what you did is you kinda identified some long-term goals. We're talking short-term goals today, but you've definitely identified some long-term goals. And you'll say, "I probably plan to death and do," but at some point, we might need a parks plan to implement all these different ideas. We gotta put a plan together and have a coordinated effort, an outline of how it's gonna get done, otherwise we'll just continue to be talking about it. So, that could be something we can plan for in this next budget year, for sure. Grant writers, that's one of the things I preliminary identified is what the city needs. And for the next year's budget, is getting a grant writer to where we can have an impact to go out and seek those dollars that are out there. What we do is kinda like every department goes out and actively does it on their own right now, but we need to make sure it's done comprehensively throughout the city. We have talked with organizations. We can't say what organization we talked to. It's up to them to release that information, not us. But we are having conversations with organizations to seek dollars for our parks and other activities. And so, when they get ready to tell you, they'll be glad to tell you. Yeah, a lot of things here. You have this list. We'll be glad to share more information, which as we go, to help in your decision-making processes. Again, this is workshop. We've started the conversations today. And as we go along, sounds like I heard that you want more feedback from the advisory, Parks Advisory Board. I think we got that. And then, at that point, we'll be ready to come back to you for another discussion of possible action of some sort on getting these items done. So, we can get them implemented and then get more dollars in next year's budget. My goal for next year's budget is to have this list finalized before you approve the budget. And it eliminates these type of time-consuming discussions. We'll do it during the budget, but at least we'll have it done and be able to just implement once the budget gets done. But thanks for this feedback. Jimmy's got more than enough to work with with these dollars. And councilmember, wherever you think this money's growing on these trees, we'll find it if it's out there. But thanks, thank you for the feedback, and we'll start working on this.
One other little comment I would love to make before we close out is that I would love to see some of the kids in the Charlton Politt area or in the area where the playground is gonna go at Central Park, to let some kids look at the playground equipment that they're gonna be playing on. You know, we got a lot of adults that are choosing playground equipment for children. And of course, it's a big magazine, but I promise you, I believe if you get a group of kids to look at some things, they can come up, especially if you go to Charlton Politt Elementary School. They could choose some children to look at the book and look at the playground equipment, to choose the equipment they wanna play on. And I'm gonna close out with that. Jimmy, thank you so very much. It's been a great, great, healthy discussion. A lot of great information has come out of this, and enough information that will keep you and the city manager busy for a while.
Well, we know our clear skies.
Yeah, we brought in the sunshine, so... But it was a great discussion. It really was.
Thank you, guys. Appreciate it.
Okay, so that does conclude both of our workshops. At this time, now's the time for public comment, if you haven't already done so. Please fill out the green slip to the back of the room, hand it to the clerk to the front of the room. The green light will come on at the beginning of your three minutes, and the red light will come on at the end of your three minutes.
James, I think it's Callis. I'm not sure. 5375 Rosemary Drive, Beaumont, Texas.
Thank you.
That certainly was an interesting discussion on our parks. I've been in Beaumont all my life, and I will tell you that Ida Reid Park does not have a restroom. There's a scout hut there that's being moved, and it seemed like the city could maybe at least put porta-potties in the parks without restaurants. So, I am James Callis. I'm a citizen of Beaumont. I've been to the Beaumont schools. I'm a Lamar graduate. I'm currently a bonded building contractor. I'm a licensed master plumber, a licensed electrician, and I'm a licensed registered AC tech, and I'm a former high school math teacher at Hebert High. I was there for many years. The only reason I left, first child, I didn't have any money to pay for the child. Postmen were making 10.5. I was making several thousand less than postmen. So, I moved into construction. Beaumont has been good for construction for a very long time, and it's very good right now, although inflation has affected it. I'm here today ahead of the December 6 meeting, where Delancy Wood will be presenting 60 red-tagged houses. I happen to have three of the red-tagged houses, not by my choice. Two got hit by trees. I've been working on them, but the one that's particularly close to my heart is Annamia's House. Now, Annamia's House is a home for homeless women on Magnolia. My family acquired it in 1936, so that means we've held it about 86 years now. And it is a very simple place on a small lot. It's got a good roof. The roof's about 85% complete. I had it in an orange tag position, and then, for whatever reason, it slipped into a red tag position. So, I'm not gonna spend a lot of time on that, but that's the house I'm concerned. When we had our scout hut and scout meetings over at Ida Reid Park, homeless women would come by as well as homeless men. I must tell you, homeless women are extremely vulnerable to being homeless. I've seen some things that would just tear your heart up, but when you're a woman on the street, it's quite a bit different than when you're a man on the street. So, Annamia's House is for homeless women. I'm not requesting any funds. I'm just requesting some more time. Now, I must tell you, I'm an active senior going into my 74th year. I still get on roofs. I go in attics. I go under houses. This is stuff I enjoy. Now, the problem is, is just me. All my friends who are about my age group, they've aged out of this. They don't get on roofs. They don't do a lot of things I still do. I have solicited some help. I just need more time. So, that's my main reason for being here. The other thing is, our city has shrunk. I was really doing some great building during the 70s, when we were the 14th largest city in Texas. Now, we're somewhere around 35th. So, hopefully, with all the good discussion today, and all you fine councilpeople and the city staff, all of y'all have really... I really work a lot with the staff, but I want to thank you for this opportunity. And I want to end with one thing, if I can. Come on. What is a man that has not made the world a better place? What is a city, if it has not made itself a better place for its inhabitants, to live and thrive and prosper?
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Dr. Belinda George, 965 East Lucas Drive, Beaumont, Texas.
Good afternoon, Madam Mayor. Those in front of me, those to my left and right, those behind me. What I just tried to model was inclusion and unity. I have been having this vision for two years. I'm not from here, but I've been having this vision. I can't shake it, and I don't want it to die with my body, so I'm gonna share with you. I've been having this vision for the hike and bike trail on Delaware to have a unified Easter egg hunt. I talked to AJ about it. I just have, I had a nephew, and one year, I was taking him from one to one to this one to all over town, because they display them, so of course, kids wants to wanna go. I want to propose to have one at the hike and bike and trail with the help of the city and support, where we have more money, use free public transportation, because a lot of the times, parents can't go because they don't have the transportation. I like the reason why I proposed the hike and bike, because you can put all the eggs on top and they roll down. I propose all of the food trucks. I already have people that say they would be willing to assist donating eggs, spending their time. Of course, it would be free to the community. Also, I would like, maybe later in the future, to have a Beaumont Night Out Easter Egg Hunt for adults with a glow-in-the-dark Easter Egg Hunt as well for adults. But I recently attended a Groves Night Out, and I was marveled. I shared it on Facebook how all of the local businesses and Chick-fil-A and credit unions and banks were out there giving out things for kids completely free, laser-tagged, and it was swarming. And I know we have more citizens than Groves, but we had way more attendance at one event in Groves than we do at Beaumont. And I just think that as a city, all of you guys do a wonderful job, day in and day out. I couldn't imagine doing it. I couldn't imagine doing it. But I know that you can make my vision happen. I just wanna see Beaumont unified. We talk a good game. We write a good game, but I don't think the kids see it. And I like to close by saying, the kids are always watching us, whether you know it or not. They learn their worst words from us. They learn their best words from us, and they watch how we react. And if we don't start creating a community that builds unity, our community will continue to have a high rate of crime. We need to show our kids now that we care about them now, so that in the future, they'll care about us. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
That's all I have, Mayor.
Now's the time for councilmember comment, and I'm gonna start with you, Councilmember Neal. Thank you, Councilmember Samuel.
Yes. Well, last evening, Councilmember Turner worked with the North End Neighborhood Association. A question was posed to me, and I'd like to get some information, so I can answer that. On Magnolia, from Lucas to Gill, East Gill, it's four lanes. And then, once you get to East Gill, it becomes three lanes, two lanes with a bicycle path on each side, and one lane in the middle for turning. It was asked to me, one is, why is it it's divided that way? And secondly, well, I told them I thought it was a result of traffic study that was done on that portion of Magnolia, and that was one of the ways that we were attempting to control some of the speed. I'm not sure if that was it or not. So, I'd like to get an explanation as to why it's that way, why it's divided, and what is the difference between, well, as it relates to safety and as it relates to speed, what's the difference between the four-lane traffic and the three-lane traffic? And have we, if this was done to facilitate bicycle traffic, I'd like to know if that's, if that was a reason. So, I'm just asking so that I can respond. The lady was very energetic, and she had a lot of questions. And I said, "Oh, oh, I need to get some answers." So, could you please get that information to me so that I can respond to her? Oh, and that's all I have, Mayor.
Thank you. Councilmember Phil Shaw.
Thank you, Mayor. I know that we're all aware of the tragedy this last weekend, Sunday morning, 2:00, 3:00 o'clock in the morning, where there was an accident involving some teenagers, and a young lady passed away. Growing up in the 60s, we remember we only had three television stations, 12, 6, and 4, and at 10 o'clock, it would come on each night with a public service announcement that would say, "Do you know where your children are?" I want to encourage all the parents that are watching, grandparents here and watching online later, please, let's keep an eye on our kids. At that age, they're not in a place to make the best decisions. And it's so tragic to know that these young people were involved in this accident, and that young lady lost her life. So, I just leave that with you today. Do you know where your children are? And number two, just wish everyone a happy Thanksgiving. If you're traveling, please be careful. If you're flying, then good luck, but have a great Thanksgiving. Thank you, Mayor.
Thanks, Randy. Councilmember Turner.
Yeah, I think it's unfortunate, and my prayers goes out to the community and our parents who dealing with some of these struggle youth. The mayor actually called me, because that incident where the kid actually lost their life, it started in my neighborhood. I seen the kids on a Ring camera pulling on my work truck, trying to get in my truck at 3:00 in the morning. When I found out, it actually originated in my neighborhood. They were trying to break in cars. So, like Randy said, I think messaging, we talked about joint messaging. I think it's time to start putting out some pretty strong messaging in reference to the youth. One thing that also been coming up consistently is, a lot of the community wants to know the initiatives that hit home to them, the important things, like, a lot of people wanna know streets, you know, some of the drainage money we spent, some of the most money we ever spent in the history of Beaumont towards drainage, but the community is asking to know, okay, what's happening? We're seeing the brown water improving, but, you know, just some videos or some images to show work that we're actually physically doing in the community, some tangible things that they can feel. Our new marketing department is doing a great job, but when people asking these questions, I think it'd be real good that we start putting out some of those things that hit home to some of the issues that they're facing, because at the Neighborhood Association meeting last night, thank you, Aldwin, thank you, Robin, for being present, but when we passed our list of things that we were doing, a lot of people were shocked, you know, that that much was going on. So, I think all across the board, it'd be pretty important to show physically some of the things we're doing on our website and our social media. Another question that I like to see researched, for a city our size, you know, based upon other cities in the community, what's a reasonable park budget, you know, so we're not shooting from the hip? I know in the past, Jimmy said, we gave them roughly anywhere from $70,000 to $170,000, but, you know, just, to me, that's a small budget for a city our size when it comes to parks. So, I think it'd be a good thing to know, before we do another budget, to know, compared to other cities, where do we stand? We definitely don't wanna be at the bottom of the barrel. We definitely don't want to be at the bottom of the barrel. Even with our park equipment, as well as the City of Beaumont basketball court that I just heard of, we have City of Beaumont colors, and I don't think the community know our colors. I think we need to do a better job branding. If we're gonna have park equipment, if we can choose colors, I think it would be very wise to start utilizing the City of Beaumont colors, even with our basketball gym, our colors are blue and green, but we have orange and things of that magnitude. So from a branding standpoint, I think that would help with the pride, as well as taking care of your community, if we took more pride in branding our colors. And lastly, from the Neighborhood Association meeting, these are things that came up that I assured the community we would ask. They asked for a stoplight or a stop sign or some type of traffic study for Stilton and Arthur. They said a lot of wrecks happened at the intersection of Stilton and Arthur. They wanted to know, can we do some type of traffic study to that magnitude to see if we can get either a stop sign or a stoplight there, Bart? The next thing is Bennett Road. To my understanding, they said it started with asphalt, the asphalt is laid, but there's no dividers, like the reflection dividers at nighttime, to help citizens know which side of the road, you know, when it's pretty dark. And the last thing is, most of the lights are out on Pine Street. So a lot of community wants to know, can we get those lights, can we get with energy, get those lights replaced? And if it needs to be additional lighting, maybe do another study there, because those, that road on Pine is pretty thin, and if you make one wrong turn, you're in a ditch. So I think it's important that we make sure the lighting's strong there. Outside of that, Mr. Williams, I appreciate you hearing our requests. I know some of us are pretty aggressive, I know I'm one of them, but you're delivering, man, I appreciate you hearing our requests, man. It feels good to be acknowledging the community, see we're having healthy conversations to move this city forward. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Getz.
Thank you, Mayor. Last night, we had a Neighborhood Association meeting in the West End as well, the one that was in the North End. We combined the Meadows Neighborhood Association, which is the area around Westbrook High School, along with the Dallin West. And I want to thank our city manager, Kenneth Williams, for being our speaker. Your comments were well-received and people were very happy to get a chance to meet you in person, and I hope you enjoyed the jambalaya that was prepared. So, thank you for that. And on a personal note, November the 8th, in 2000, I'm sorry, November the 22nd, 2008, my wife Alice and I stood underneath the hoopla at Temple Emmanuel, and we exchanged our wedding vows. And 14 years later, I love her more than I've ever done before, so happy anniversary, sweetheart.
That's nice. Mayor Pro Tim Durian.
First, happy anniversary to you and your wife, Mike. I just want to ask the manager, on our committee appointees, could we get the chairman of those appointees to, one, tell us if our members are not showing up? And two, could we get the minutes from those meetings? Because some of us aren't able to make all the committee meetings. If we could get the minutes, it would be very helpful. My condolences to the family of the tragedy that happened this past weekend. Also, want to tell everybody to be careful, there's a lot of construction going on right now, especially on Interstate 10. It's a lot of traffic, you know, I go through it every day going home, since Bennett Road is still not open. So you gotta be careful, watch the signs and watch for the traffic. Everybody else, one other thing, I agree exactly with what Councilman Samuel said, that's why I was speaking up, because a closed mouth don't get fed. So everybody have a happy Thanksgiving.
Mr. City Manager.
Thank you. And that's one thing we want to do, is be able to record our attendance at our board meetings. I think that needs to be a part of our policy, and you should probably have some limits on attendance and absences, how many people, what they're having. Just a couple of things, I was able to go to the Godfather showing the other night and I enjoyed that. Councilmember Getz, the mayor was there too, and I think it got a bit long, and Cynthia was like, is it time to go yet? But we stayed it out, and it was, it was a great movie, so, thanks for that invite. Just a couple of things, I forgot to acknowledge the members of that camera committee, that was Chris Boone and Bart, and Jimmy, Jimmy Neal, and Chief Singletary, or his designated name, I'm not sure if Chief showed up.
Jeff Coats.
Chief Jeff Coats showed, so thank them for their work. Chris is gonna give you, Chris, I think you have your downtown dashboard with you, if you can kind of give that, when I think it'll come around to you. You don't have to do it right now, I think the mayor's gonna acknowledge you for that. Council enjoys that. But last, I'd just like to say, happy Thanksgiving to everyone. Thank you.
Thank you. City Attorney.
I'll defer my time to Chris Boone.
Mr. Boone.
Thank you, Mayor. Yeah, just real quickly, should have in your packet the updated dashboard, just a couple changes on it. One thing you'll notice is at the bottom right-hand corner, we'll put the date, so you know you're looking at the most current. And in terms of little changes, you'll see the downtown plan has ticked up a little bit, because we do have our first meeting scheduled. And then on the 4th, it's 125 Magnolia RFP, that's going out, I believe, this week, so we should have that due back December 15th. So, but other than that, I wish everybody a happy Thanksgiving.
Thank you. Mr. Barkovia.
The streetlights are maintained by Entergy for the city, so I would encourage citizens, if they can, they can call Energy or go through their website, or use the Entergy app to report streetlights that are out. The benefit to citizens, if they do report it directly, is if we run into supply chain issues, like we all are, Entergy will contact back to whoever reports that light being out, giving them a status update on when the light will be repaired. If we submit the report to Entergy, that, we get that back, so that citizen doesn't get that reporting back and forth while they're working on repairing the light, which they will, if they report the light directly. So I would encourage citizens to look, and if that works for them, otherwise, if they call 311, then we'll, we'll report it ourselves and work it.
Would you happen to have the Entergy information?
I don't have the phone number on hand, but you can hit Google, I'm sure, and find it real quick. And the app is really neat now, if, if you have downloaded the app, because there's a map that's within the app, and it actually shows the streetlight, and you can just click on it with your finger where it is on the map, so it's very intuitive through the app. They've done a lot of good work with that.
App is energy.com?
It's, if you, if you search Entergy on the, on the App Store, it'll find it for you.
Thank you. Ms. Semenow, well, when we were talking about all of that money, I looked over it, I looked over it too, and I thought, I hope he doesn't fall out of his seat.
I have a lot of text messages from my staff, so, we're gonna, we're gonna be busy already for next year's budget.
Thank you. And our city clerk.
Just like to wish everybody a happy Thanksgiving, and to Councilmember Getz and Alice, and happy anniversary.
Thank you. Well, it's down to me, and the first thing I would like to say is, I want to send condolences to the family of the youth, and it's so unfortunate what happened. And Councilmember Turner, when I called him, he explained to me, he said, "I'm in, in the community right now, talking to my neighbors about what happened." And it was because someone got up around 3:00 a.m., made the phone call to the police department, and the officer just happened to be nearby in the area and answered the call. And from there, what they thought was just someone going into a neighborhood, it turned out to be something much, much more. But again, Councilmember Felsshaw, I hated that commercial when it says, "Do you know where your children are?", because that was our signal to go to bed. And so, yeah, that mean, if you heard that, it was time for you to go to bed. And I mean, it came on every night, like clockwork, and some of you, I'm sure you, you think we're crazy, because you don't know what we're talking about. But this came on every night at 10 o'clock, "Do you know where your children are?" And it's so unfortunate that you may think you do know where your children are. And it's probably the worst phone call a parent would ever, ever want to get. And so, please keep them in prayer during this time. Also, condolences to all of the people in Colorado that was gunned down in that club. Another tragedy, and it seems to continue. And unfortunately, it's just things that we have to deal with. Again, kudos to Emily for a great night, the 50th showing of The Godfather. I think I was probably 12 when it originally showed, so I didn't get to see it and had never seen it, that was my first time seeing it. That was my first time ever seeing it, yes. And so, I had been out all day, I think Mr. Williams and I had been to three different departments, the fire department, the police department, one other department, I mean, it was just back-to-back-to-back meetings. I believe I got home at about 6:15, the movie started at 7:00. I got there at 7:15, so I missed the first 15 minutes, so I'm calling other people to get caught up on it, but it was a great, great showing, and I did see you when you got up with your hat on and you went to the concession stand and saw Mr. Williams after the show. But it was, it was a great show. There was a big, I mean, you could stand up and have your picture made with the chart, and that's the only way I want to have my picture made, with that chart of how tall I am, with the Godfather sign. So Emily and to her staff, thank you, because they did a great job. And also, congratulations to West Tabernacle Church. They celebrated 118 years of being in the community. They had an event on Sunday afternoon with several churches that attended, and it started at 3:00, and we were out of there by 5:45. So, that was pretty good for 118-year celebration. But it was a great celebration, and I can remember the church being in the neighborhood because it was right across the street from the only pool on that side of town that is no longer there. In addition, Beaumont is really, really moving and Beaumont is growing. I had four ribbon cuttings last week, and so got to see a lot of the chamber, and a lot of great things are happening. Also, got a visit last week from the regional manager from Main Street, she came up to the office, met myself and Mr. Williams and our city attorney. They're excited about opening up, and so look forward to that happening towards the end of the year. The main event will be opening. In addition to that, we will not have a meeting Tuesday, so, following the Thanksgiving holiday. And last but not least, one of those meetings that city manager and I attended was the retirement surprise party for Burmaster, y'all. Burmaster is retiring. And so, he said this time, he's truly retiring, but it was a great little ceremony, he was surprised. He thought he was coming in to tell people about driving safe and traffic tickets as a whole, but he got, he got surprised, and he was really caught off guard. And I saw a different side of him, other than him standing up writing a ticket for me. But he was, he was really surprised, and so it was a good surprise. And I'm gonna close with, please enjoy your family, have a happy Thanksgiving, be safe, and go out and spread the love. We're gonna recess to executive session, thank you for coming. Bye-bye.